I have to call the board of education meeting for tonight, 15th. Mr. Board Secretary, is this meeting advertised with us for open public meeting?
Yes, it is.
Everybody, please rise for pledge.
Pledge, please. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, universal, liberty, and justice for all.
Good roll call, please. Mrs. Baccara.
Here.
Mr. Bishada.
Here.
Mr. Syak.
Here.
Mr. Clark.
Here.
Mr. Lemro.
Here.
Mrs. Stratt.
Here.
Mrs. Krapp.
Here.
Mr. De La Stier.
Here.
Mr. McEnroe. Present. We have two presentations tonight for your viewing pleasure. We have one on technology and one on administrative retreat. Dr. Farno, you want to go first?
Sure.
Are you going to...
It's okay. The board wants to gravitate the path. I know that Syak also has...
I'd like to welcome everybody. I hope everybody's summer's going well. We can do a little bit more than just the retreat that we had, but what I would like to make sure is that Ms. Baumann and Ms. Sutherland also jump in where we go into this situation. But I'd like to give you, in the actual agenda, there's two goals that are district goals. One deals with what is called the PGP, Professional Growth Plan, for the administrative team, and the other is a strategic planning goal that basically we're getting involved. During the summer last week, we had what is called our administrative retreat. And each year, 27 of us get together for two or three days. And basically, if you go to the next slide, we talk about predominantly leadership. And this year, our theme is great leaders make a difference, and they do make a difference. I don't always sometimes see it, but you do. And what we're trying to do here is, we're trying to create what are called learning communities. And this is the big thing that's out there right now. And what we're doing is in each school, and I'll talk a little bit about what learning communities are, and maybe Ms. Baumann for a few minutes would tell what she basically does in her school, Ms. Brady a little bit what they do in the SUES. But we're trying to do some things that are a little bit different, that we empower people to start making some decisions. So at this retreat, we talked about leadership. Every administrator also received a book. Each year, we read about maybe two to three books, pedagogical books on leadership. This year was 15 things great principals or leaders do differently. And predominantly, I'm not going to go through the book. The book was one of those quick books that you read maybe in a night or two nights. And it's a... But the main thrust of the book that everybody got, it's not about programs, it's not about equipment, it's not about really all the things that we think is, it's really about people. It's really about the fact that you care and that you're passionate and that you're very concerned about the one thing that really matters more than anything else, and that obviously is the children. And it was really a nice discussion. We brought in the speaker, which is Mr. Bob Fazio, who's the Assistant Superintendent at Union City Public Schools. And he did a lot of things, not only on leadership, but he also helped us out with, we're going through monitoring this year, which is called the Jersey CUSAC. It starts with a desk audit this year and then actually go through the monitoring the following year. So he did a lot of that. Hattie Gary came in, who's the county superintendent, and he spoke about for a half a day about monitoring, about leadership, and it was really a very good two days. Just to give you an idea, these are the pedagogical goals. These are, this is what really is going to make up the administrative team. What we discussed, learning communities, New Jersey CUSAC is the state new monitoring system. District curriculum, we're really going to concentrate very heavily on that this year, moving the district forward, new revising, and now we're doing what is called mapping. We'll get to that in a few seconds. Strategic planning. We are now in the third year of a three-year plan, and each month or every other month, one of those six goals, which we'll get to a little bit later, basically we send out and upgrade to whether or not we're meeting that goal and how we're meeting that goal and what benchmarks there are predominantly that we're trying to attain. And finally, sustained professional development for the leaders in the district, which is all 26 supervisors, principals, and vice principals. Just quickly, learning communities, if you don't really know what we're really talking about, you empower all the stakeholders. Everybody has a stake in what is being done. Jointly analyze specific issues and new programs. Best strategies for school improvement, enhancing effectiveness and answering difficult questions. So things are not just done in a vacuum around here. We really try to get as much opinion as possible can from the stakeholders. And then obviously, those are two quotes from very important people that really believe in what learning communities are. And the most successful organization of the future will be a learning organization where people continually expand their capacity to create the results they truly desire. And the leaders knew where for the future is building learning organizations where people continually expand their capacities. So what it does is, you're learning, it's a continual learning process. I'm not going to go over this too heavily because you're going to hear a lot of this. New Jersey CUSAC is the New Jersey Quality Single Accountability Continuum. I think right now approximately one-third of the schools in the state of New Jersey, between 150 and 200, went through this process last year. I'd say 50% of them didn't do well. So this process is much more cumbersome, much more detailed than it is, and it's broken up into five categories: instruction and programs, personnel, fiscal management, operation, and governance. This year, we are going to have a steering committee that will look at every single facet of our school system to make sure that we, there are indicators in every single one of these different five categories that we are discussing every single week in regard to how do we make this district better, as well as how do we move forward, as well as whether we meet some of the criteria that the state has set up and what do we have to do to get there. And I'm just going to let Georgia talk a little bit about the curriculum. And just to give you an idea, we're 100% aligned with the core curriculum content standards. Okay? We have, I would say, 90% of our curriculum electronically on the drive, on the intraschool drive. The staff now writes most of the curriculum. We review it, as well as the board, so that they take ownership in it. We're starting to map. We're doing language analysis, you know, should we add more languages and things of that nature. We're looking at our AP courses. Should we incorporate AP physics, AP chemistry? Mike's pushing, yes. Okay? We have to make sure that we have an audience for that, and as well as can we find the correct people. We're looking at virtually, which Kevin's going to come up and talk a little bit about technology, whether or not we incorporate a virtual classroom in regard to whether or not we want to offer Chinese or some other language that we don't offer now. SATs and testing analysis. Georgia, just want to make a quick comment about the curriculum?
Ms. Sutherland?
In line with Paul's conversation about getting our children ready for the 21st century and aligning our curriculum clear for the 21st century, Paul and I are working on a series of five technology courses, looking to write the curriculum next year during '08, '09, and operate in '09, '10. If one street gets in a series of five courses, they will have in hand what they take appropriate camps certificates that will allow them to get needed for their work role and to work out the technology for them.
And the next two slides, one deals with the strategic plan, the other deals with sustained professional development. These are basically ongoing goals that we've had for the last few years. If you can go back to the other slide, you could see, and starting this year, basically what we're going to do is, I'm not just going to give the action plan team's report on how they're doing twice a year. I'm probably going to, when the performance report comes up, I'm going to have the chairperson of performance, who is caller, to come up and give a short analysis of what we did to meet that standard, to meet that goal. What we are doing, Mr. Agulhas is here, from the perspective of safe and clean schools, like our emergency management plan, pandemic plans. A lot of people don't realize the amount of work that we put into each and every one of these goals. There's a steering committee of 10 people, and in each one of these different sections, there are probably five to 10 people that are working with another, with their school system or whatever department that they're working. This is all about special education and human resources. Ms. Duffy heads that committee. Parent involvement, Mr. Coobin heads that. Fiscal accountability, that's Mr. DeAndrea. And professional development is Linda Coffey. So each, every other month, we get a detailed report on how we are doing. Remember, it says here, six goals, these are the goals. Action plans, how do we meet these goals? And benchmarks, did we meet these goals from an accountability perspective? And you'll seem to hear more about that. And the last one is, what are we doing to train our professionals as far as the principals, the supervisors, the vice principals? Well, there's what is called a professional growth plan. Matter of fact, somebody from another district just asked me, can you please help me with the PGP? And said to me, can you email me the template that you're using and how do you do stages seven, eight, and nine? Which means that's the last stage of three years and how we met that goal. And each one of our administrators has a specific goal, a specific professional growth plan that he or she, for example, Ms. Coffey's was on technology. Her PGP was about 100 pages long, how she accomplished it. Then each individual has a committee. That committee may be made up, Georgia's committee has five principals in it and a supervisor. And they then in turn will be reporting back to the administrative team, and there'll be a lot of dialogue. That's what we mean by a learning community. We learn from each other. And then finally, there are professional development plans or professional improvement plans. And that is related to what we do in the district regarding to the seven state standards. Those last two slides were my goals, they're on the agenda tonight for approval. I track them with the board five, four, I believe, four times a year, and I give a lot of documentation to whether I meet those goals or not. So in a nutshell, that's basically what we talked about over two days. There is a lot of dialogue that went on. I do want to say, I want to thank the board for supporting it. And does anybody have any questions? Because we have another excellent presentation that goes along with this, which is in regard to technology. And Mr. Syak, he will come up and do his presentation right now. Thank you for listening. Sorry it's so hot, but...
I'll try to be brief, given the temperatures. I represent the Board of Education on the District's Technology Committee and have done so for several years. And this is a report of not only what the Technology Committee's been involved in, but also what's going on in terms of trends, in terms of 21st century learning. So with that, I want to pose a question to all of you, which is, who are you? Are you an immigrant, born in another time and place, and have you come to this land for the first time to seek a new life and new opportunity and new experiences? Or are you a native? Were you born here with grateful thanks to your ancestors who made that trip, who took the risk, and who came to this country? In today's digital world, all of us in this room, I think all of us in this room, are basically digital immigrants. Because we were not born with this technology handed to us. This technology hasn't surrounded us for all of our lives. Instead of being called digital immigrants, we may be called by other names: parents, teachers, principals, superintendents, or board members. Several years ago, I took a human relations course, and one of the quotes was, "We may have all come here in different ships, but we're all now in the same boat." And that's what our staff and our administrators and our board members are finding themselves in now, in dealing with this new digital generation. So let's meet the natives. And this slide is significant for two reasons. First of all, every photo you see here is a photo of either a current student in our district or a graduate of our district. But the more significant reason that this slide is significant is that all of these photos, none of the students know I'm using in this presentation tonight. And the reason they're not aware of it is because every single one of these photos is public domain, public information, and any one of you can go on to facebook.com, look up the person, and find this photo. And behind each one of these photos, if the student gives you access because they recognize you as a friend, are hundreds of other photos of themselves and other students doing everything from senior class trips to backyard barbecues and basically displaying their entire lives online. So we've transitioned to a world where students are much more open and much more sharing and much more collaborative and much more freer in terms of exchanging information about themselves, which opens it up to a whole bunch of risks as well as a whole bunch of opportunities. When I talk about Facebook, which is a social networking site where I got all of those photos, I want to pause and spend a moment on the demographics. This is as of November 2007, the US Facebook subscriptions only. And as you can see, the left-hand side ages 13, which is approximately eighth grade level, all the way up to 24, college plus. You have our students making up the largest category of Facebook users. On the right-hand side, 25 and forward, you've got the group that is 25 and plus, where our teachers fall in. And unfortunately, they're not at the same level in terms of usage, in terms of collaboration, and in terms of using these tools that our students are using and are so much a part of their lives. I asked Danny Giavenco back in the beginning of the year to join me in Washington DC to do a presentation to the National School Boards Association on this very topic. And one of the things I asked him to come, he's a class of 2006 graduate, was to come and talk about what's it like to be a digital learner in this day and age. And with that in mind, he happened to walk into his dorm, and he saw his roommate in this position, listening to his iPod, watching The Simpsons on TV, text messaging on his cellphone, and doing his homework using two monitors. This generation is a generation of multitaskers, constant stimulation, constant involvement with technology, and doing many things at the same time. They retain information differently than students of the past, and obviously, from what you just saw, they use technology to learn. Consultant author and educational software designer Mark Brenski, who by the way coined the term "digital native," says that these students have had digital technology surrounding them from the time they were infants, and the digital world affords to many things that the previous worlds didn't. Furthermore, there was a study at the University of Wisconsin, which basically determined that the brain's development process in order to organize self-competing information is in development until the ages of 16 or 17. Now, based on the photo I just showed you, it begs the question, have our students developed a multitasking prowess beyond our capability? In addition to being multitaskers, Danny also said that students of today are abbreviators. Previously, we as adults abbreviated things that needed to be abbreviated, the National Aeronautics and Space Administration, or NASA, the Food and Drug Administration, or the FDA. But now, IDK, what happens? Because now we're abbreviating things like, "I don't know." But it goes further than that. LOL, laugh out loud. ROFL, rolling on the floor laughing. BRB, and don't hit the button yet. BRB, be right back. How many know what POS is? Take a guess. Parent over shoulder. They managed to find a way to communicate with their generation to make sure that you don't know what they're communicating about. And mind your own business. At the College of New Jersey, they also found ways to abbreviate things that we never thought necessary. For example, I study at the library, Danny studies at the lib. I hung out at the student center, Danny goes to the stud. This is my favorite. This is a residence hall at college in New Jersey called Travers and Wolf, which you might think would be abbreviated Travers Wolf, but that's too long. You might think TW would be sufficient, but that's also too long. The students who live there live in T-Dubs. So it gives you an idea of the speed at which students are operating. All of our students now, the digital age, are tech savvy, Microsoft Excel, PowerPoint, Word, internet research, those are staples. But beyond that, we're living in an environment where students are sharing files, they're instant messaging, online marketplace, wikis, blogs, high levels of collaboration and interaction with students, adults. In addition to that, this is also not only a challenge for schools, but I just read an article in CIO Magazine where the workforce is having a challenge with this as well. Because the digital generation, as they're getting jobs in the workforce, are now coming in with the mindset that anyone I know is a coworker. So if I've got a problem and I work in a research and development lab for a corporation and we're developing something top secret, our digital age has no problem calling up Mr. Agulhas and sharing that information and saying, "What do you think about this?" And it raises all sorts of proprietary questions in terms of how the corporations deal with this generation of workers. At the College of New Jersey, papers have been virtually eliminated, all building cycles need done electronically. I also asked him to talk about technology, education, and internet safety. And he shared a very compelling story that basically emphasizes we need to teach students the risks that are out there and what to do and what not to do in order to be appropriate citizens of the internet. And he shared the following story. A friend of his at the College of New Jersey was very interested in applying to an internship. She applied for the internship, she was going through the process, and she was being very much actively recruited by this company and was very excited about the internship. She got a letter in the mail indicating that they're no longer considering her application. And she was devastated and had no idea why. So she sent an email to the company and said, "Why is it that I wasn't considered a successful candidate for this application?" The HR person responded back and said, "You should be careful of what you post on your MySpace page." This is a photo of college binge drinking, and I had to ask somebody to figure out what it was because I had a tough time figuring it out. But the message is, students need to know what's right, what's appropriate, and how to behave ethically and appropriately in the new world that they're conquering. And it's something that they're not currently learning in schools. In addition, we've got a hard time even getting parents out. We run these type of programs at Eisenhower School, we get two or three parents because the awareness is just not there, the priority is just not there, and the understanding of the risks, I don't think is there. So let's go through a day in the life of Danny Giavenco. He gets up in the morning and he checks his email. He then logs onto SOX and checks his schedule for the classes he needs to attend. He then logs onto tests and sees if he has any assignments. He'll then instant message his friend Joe to find out if he wants to get some breakfast. On his way to the stud, he's listening to his iPod. He'll then come back and update his Facebook page and his MySpace profile. He'll then go to the computer lab to do some work, who use technology in all of his classrooms. He'll blog for a while and share his opinions on the latest technology offerings. He'll log on, he'll use his weed for some entertainment and some relaxation. He'll type his term papers in Microsoft Word, he'll prepare this PowerPoint for me in PowerPoint, he'll watch his plasma TV, he'll get a text message from his sister's friend that says to Danny, "You are so cute, oh my gosh, I love you." He'll then call his sister and tell her to tell his friend to stop bugging her. And then the next day, he goes through and does it all over again. The pace is frenetic. So then the next question is, what does this mean to us as educators? What does it mean to us as adults? And basically, what it comes down to is, I think you missed the slide. There we go. Some context. This is a story about the big public conversation about public education that we're not having, whether or not an entire generation of kids will fail to make the grade because they can't compete globally, collaborate teams, distinguish quality information from poor information, or speak a language other than English. To give you an idea of that global economy, this is a street in Dubai in 1990, same street 2007. You're looking at a nation that has a Vulcan and a nation that's extremely progressive and is building and growing and taking a lot of the jobs that we previously had. My manager at General Electric, who's one year younger than I am, has visited 110 cities in 18 countries, most of which are company business. How do I know this? It's on his Facebook profile with a map. The demands of the workplace are changing, and the magnitude of our competition is changing. You can see that from the photo from Dubai. From what you saw from Danny's information, the nature of the student experience has changed, and we need many more of our students to become effective 21st century citizens and medicines with lifelong teaching and learning skills. And technology is also a profound tool for engaging students who may otherwise be disaffected and not engage in a classroom learning environment. Voters are also clear, and here's some statistics from the Center for Public Education, which basically say they're aware that there's a gap, they're aware that schools need to retool in order to serve this new clientele, but at the same time, we can't walk away from math, English, reading, science, and arithmetic. This is the New Jersey framework for 21st century learning, with the ultimate goal of New Jersey school graduates becoming global thinkers, workers, and leaders. And the outgrowing arches are basically the area where local districts need to focus on standards and assessment, curriculum and instruction, professional development, and creating learning environments, a lot of what Dr. Al-Fan will talk about. These are the things that the state of New Jersey believes every student must be, critical thinker, problem solver, innovator, basically relevant contributors to society, relevant contributors to the workforce. We've had a transition from reading, writing, and arithmetic to a new three Rs of a rigorous curriculum, one that's relevant to our students, and one that allows them to collaborate, build relationships, and take advantage of the relationships which they already have. And we've transitioned from a school day, which is six hours a day with maybe an hour or two of homework, to the opportunity for whatever, wherever, and whenever learning. Curriculum and instruction must address 21st century skills, and it can't be a class. You can't have a class of 21st century skills. It's got to be a place where it's integrated into the curriculum and taught as part of the everyday environment. We need to challenge our students and present them with problem-solving opportunities and ways to make the work in which they do relevant. There's a lot of big education words on here, so I'm going to turn this to an example that I used once before in graphical format. Let's say you want to study earthquakes. If you go onto the National Geological Society, you can pull down the latitude and longitude of every major earthquake in 2004. If you plot it, latitude and longitude is nothing more than an X-Y coordinate system. If you plot it, you get the image up at top, which basically looks like a map. If you do it for 2007, you get the same design. If you look in this region, you will note that there are a lot more data points, that it's a lot thicker, it's a lot... it's a lot thicker, it's a lot better defined in 2004 than it is here in 2007. So then you take all that data and you graph the magnitude on the Richter scale of every single earthquake which happened in 2004 all across the world. And if you take, actually not all across the world, right in that region. If you take a look at the December, you'll see a huge spike with something at 9.0 on the Richter scale, followed by several aftershocks in the six range. So then we go to Google, and we type in earthquake, December 2004. And then we find out that we've just identified the Indian Ocean earthquake. So what you've now taken is a situation where you've started with the street mathematical data. You've then translated that into a cartographic projection, a map. You've used that information to pinpoint the exact location of a major historical event. And that's just the whole gamut. There's several places where this lesson could branch off. A great question to ask the students would be, use this data, is there any way we could have predicted this catastrophe two or three weeks in advance? And that would be an interesting opportunity for our students to take a look, do some analysis, and see what they can find out. So now let's bring it up, making several a 21st century learning community. Everything that I just talked about really hinges upon the quality of interaction between the student and the teacher in the classroom. We need to enable students to learn in relevant real-world 21st century terms. Everybody's tuned into WII FM, "What's in it for me?" They wanna know, "How is this relevant to what I'm doing?" Support expanded community international involvement in learning both face-to-face and online. Again, you're seeing the collaboration thing, the sharing thing. Highlight ways teachers can seize opportunities to integrate 21st century skills, such as what I just demonstrated, tools and teaching strategies into practice. Create 21st century professional learning communities, teams, that model learning to best promote 21st century skills for students, not only at the student level, but at the faculty level. And use a variety of strategies to reach diverse students, both the advanced placement students all the way to the special needs students. And what we're proposing, and it was outlined in our budget, is a new certificated technology integration teacher. This is not a supervisor. No one reports to this individual, I don't even think, and it would be my goal that this individual don't even have an office in the district. Because we don't want them in an office. We want them in a classroom. We want them working with students, we want them working with teachers. And the overarching vision on this is that this individual will empower teachers to be able to do the types of lessons which I just shared that are relevant to our students, build that collaboration, build that 21st century learning, and enable it to happen. How is one teacher going to reach every single teacher that we employ? He or she is not. However, what we're hoping is that that person can tap into the resources that exist in every school. Teachers who are passionate about technology, passionate about 21st century learning, passionate about expanding their skill set, and that that passion will become contagious and spread throughout the entire district. In addition to that, we've got a new high school robotics class which is being launched this year. We have three sections, totally 50 students. And the important takeaway of this program is it's not just for advanced placement students. In addition to working with those students, we're also using this as an opportunity to tap into other students who have special needs that we need to address. Again, differentiated instruction. We've got 1,000 new computers planned district-wide by September. We've got on the agenda tonight, we'll be discussing a parent link software, which will enable us to directly reach out to parents and communicate about student progress and important information which needs to be shared regarding district events. We're implementing new technology tracks, which I'll talk about in a second, as well as new technology literacy standards. The item on the left, these are two information technology tracks which we're implementing starting in 2009. The first one is basically geared and relevant to students who are heading in an IT and computer-oriented direction. Freshman year, they're gonna learn all the keys about Microsoft Word, PowerPoint, Excel, with the opportunity to become a certified Microsoft Office user specialist, which is an industry-recognized certificate. Sophomore year, they move on to PC configuration, and will eventually, hopefully, garner Microsoft Certified Professional Certification. Junior and senior year are focused on networking and CISTO certification. So students who take this track, starting at their freshman year of high school, will be able, upon graduation, to not only walk out with a high school diploma, but walk out with a certificate in their hand that's recognized by prospective employers. And then they can attend college and further their education even further. On the right-hand side is basically the same type of approach, with a different spin. This is geared toward the more artistic student. Rather than just drawing on pencil and paper, you can get involved in digital graphics, starting with digital photography, integrating that into Adobe Illustrator, Adobe Photoshop, and creating artistic creations electronically, ultimately with being able to present marketing materials. Keep in mind, this is not just about using technology, it's about all the techniques to back it up in terms of marketing, design, what companies are looking for in the workforce in terms of a skill set to sell and market. Finally, we're also into a new world of technology literacy assessment. In addition to all of the real-world applications of technology, we are now facing a new state-mandated test that will specifically assess whether or not students understand the core use of technology. We've got a brochure that was handed out, which shows what is expected to be known by each one of your students at various grade levels, and what will be tested at the eighth and twelfth grade levels. We are planning on implementing that particular curriculum right now through our history department. We've had a team of teachers working all year in putting that entire curriculum together. It was interesting, because the technology committee dealt with it first. And we sat there for about an hour, and we had a quasi-diverse group of educators there with myself, and none of us could figure out what our students currently know. And we realized at that particular point that we just didn't have the right team of educators in the room, that we really needed teachers from the first grade, second grade, the eighth grade, the ninth grade, all the way through, to really work with this curriculum and figure out what it is we need to teach and at what level. And I'm proud to say that they were able to deliver on that. What's next for Serbo? We are actually talking about a program for a laptop for every student. It's not gonna start out for every student, but we're talking about a small pilot program, and we'll be talking more about that in the fall of next year. It's not planned for '08, '09, but we're looking at something for 2009, 2010, and Mr. Agalase is leading that effort up. And you'll hear more about that in my next report, and hopefully there's a lot more. By the way, that photo on the right was of Danny speaking in Russian music. Anyone have any questions?
Okay, excellent briefing, Mr. Syak. I think that just puts in perspective the challenges of teaching in today's classroom. When I was going to school in the 70s, the most technology was the overhead projector that the class, that the teacher rode on, never had it the right sway. The technology committee has done a lot of work. Kevin, obviously, was the natural choice to lead this and has been doing this before I was on the board. He has formal education, he has a bachelor's degree in electrical engineering from Rutgers School of Engineering, and obviously understands the application of technology, but how it works. And he's the right person at the right time to move the district forward in technology. And I'm very happy in the direction that we're moving in technology. The downside of it, is technology is expensive, and the technology has done, has made things very specific and very compartmentalized, and you're not qualified, trained, even built. And Kevin did a very good job to show you the day in the life of a kid in the 21st century. And the question I have for Kevin is, where did you get that picture of my daughter on the block?
I thought some word that was my recognize.
Yeah, I see what you're saying. Thank you. On the correspondence, everybody should have received the monthly technology work order report, the monthly maintenance work order reports, the weekly construction management reports, and the monthly construction management reports. Does anybody have any questions or concerns about those reports?
I've got one, I need to do a correspondence. The board's had an outgoing letter that has been pending for quite some time, because we're trying to figure out exactly how to discuss it, and there's no other way to discuss it other than to discuss it in public, so I'm gonna bring it up at this point. I reached out to Dr. Alfan, it's gotta be at least six months now, regarding the high school construction and the new wings that we're building. And I had suggested to him that with the new era that we're entering in terms of the high school, and the new wings that are going up, that one of the things that I think would be very appropriate would be for the music suite of this high school to be named the John Bon Jovi Music Suite. There's a graduate that we have who has, you know, he's world-renowned, and he's exemplary of Serbo. And I think it's an opportunity that we should explore as a board to basically put that recognition in place and honor John. But more than that, I think it's also a message to our students that says, no matter what your dreams are, no matter what it is that you believe in, regardless of how much of a wrong shot it would be, that if you work hard, if you've got the talent, and if you pursue it, that this is what can happen. And it would be especially relevant for the students who are in the arts or in the news ground. So I wanted to, as I said, the letter's been pending, the board has certainly known about it, the board has seen a copy of the letter, but before that letter went under the mantle of Mr. Brown, I wanted to bring it up publicly so we could discuss it. And I would hope that if the press is here, that if the board does go forward with this, that the press doesn't publish an article until we have a chance to contact him, because it would be nice for him to read a letter from Mr. Brown, as opposed to seeing something in the newspaper without him picking up the evidence. So I'd like to open it up for board discussion now, and then we can talk publicly during the superintendent's call, if it's something the board should consider.
Any board comment?
Do we like the idea, do we not like the idea?
How many, did we research other people, or did we just pick Bon Jovi?
In terms of the music aspect, I don't know of any larger figure than John Bon Jovi in the school history. I'm certainly not limiting the name of any other wings or any other areas, but this particular wing seems to have some significance and some appropriateness to be named after that.
Did we solicit for other names or look into anybody else? Where did we come up, like him? I mean, who picked John Bon Jovi?
The idea was mentioned to me by several faculty members. I sent it to Frank, Dr. Alfan spoke to Mr. Brown, Mr. Brown confirmed the vote was a good idea. He did come back for the 2020 special two years ago, and Mr. Brown was supportive, and is now basically comes to the board.
Mr. Brown?
I'm with the board's support, and we're glad that it serves as an excuse for the person who brought it in.
Anything else?
I was gonna say, Pat just said that it's something to reach for for each and every student, whether it's athletics, or music, or anything that they could win to be, that that opportunity is out there, if they feel lucky and if they are part of that.
I'm in support of it, and I think it would give people the inspiration that someone that went to Serbo actually made it through, so it's very big, and I think it's a good thing for the kids. I think the kids of this generation and somebody they met class has a big name on
Mr. Brown?
I think it's no question. The worst that can happen is he doesn't return a letter back to us. The best second half we receive are more early, and versus if it comes here and he makes Serbo and Music Suite a risk, maybe better than that.
Mr. Bisho?
I have my reservations, and they're honest with me. You know, this is Serbo, we're only more than twice. Other people have been named after that are residents and have done pictures of Serbo. Mr. Bon Jovi has only come back to the school once that I know of, and that's when he had his new album out. Back home, there's something that kind of is. I really don't think, you know, John has that much concern of Serbo.
I guess Mike.
I think he's the most successful individual that's graduated this high school for his area of expertise. It's true, he's well-known. I have my own reservations, and it's not of not naming him. I just think we had a great opportunity, and I'll catch heat for this, but I think John Bon Jovi should have been deducted into First Ave or a little more high school open. I think that was mistaken, and it was overlooked, and I think that should have been done. And having said that, I would agree to name a music suite. I mean, if we name a gym or a building after him, I would understand that maybe there are more, sort of, I know we have some people that distinguish themselves in our nation's voice, that are alumni of school, that are still living in this town, but this is a music suite. And I think naming a portion after someone who came from First Ave and was very successful in the music industry, I would certainly support. But I would like to see the letter and make sure that we're wording in a such a way that we're honoring him versus asking, if you perceive it as asking for a donation, but just honor him and ask for his permission to name the suite, and then let it go from there. But that's my view. Yes?
I'd like to see us instead of vote on this tonight, to reach out to the public and see if there's anybody else out there that anybody thinks is worthy to name this, because just because we know of John Bon Jovi doesn't mean that whoever represents him knows everyone who passed through this course. So I just think to make the decision tonight, if you're rushing it, I think that this is my research.
I'm sure asking this for his letter to be sent, it's a very important question.
The issue's been lingering. The issue's been lingering for six months, with notes from Dr. Alfan saying, "We need to address this, we need to address this." So I'm looking for a discussion with the current public, let's get some public input, and let's see where we go from here. I'm looking to start a discussion, let's put it that way.
I don't see how you can say this is a delay, but is there some way that's inevitable?
Well, it's gotta start, you gotta start a discussion.
Right, I know, but I mean, I don't know, I think that anybody's gonna go ahead.
If you want to talk about another date, Ms. Paco, do you want to chair up the committee to do the search, and see if there's anybody else who might deserve to name it? And bring that information back to the board? I can hear you. What kind of timeframe? Obviously, we're naming the music suite, so we'll give it out sometime.
Well, the issue is, you know, the music suite is scheduled for completion, it's got a little bit of a lot, so I basically got, I think.
Well, we reconvene, and I'm interested to hear what the public says when we open up the public, their opinions that we have tonight. I'm happy we have a diverse population in tonight, and I'm sure we'd be more interested to invite them to the audience. Okay.
I'd like to just, even though we have a year, obviously, we need to work on this and come up with an answer, where to draw within the law, just within even a few months, I feel like.
I think next board meeting, we should, if we can intervene in the discussion, if anything? Okay, there we go.
And I would, I'd like to reiterate that, I'm not a huge, I shouldn't, I'm not a huge Bon Jovi fan, but the kids are, and that's, again, to show the kids how much they can do. And I just mean it like I'm not into that music, but to show the kids where they can be in the future is, that's my ideal to get at with this.
Okay. So we can move to the discussion at the next board meeting, make the maximum number candidates, and we can discuss it in a quick debate. Before I move on, any other discussions about the music suite? Okay. Meeting at the minute, it's on the last meeting. There's no sitting council representative during summer, and we have no big individual Highlights, we're moving right along. Mr. Superintendent, your report, sir.
Thank you. Section one, buildings and grounds, no report. Section two, A through L is our regular resolutions. Item M is what we're receiving in consolidated application grant money, which is on page two. Item N is our hearing coordinator, that's our asbestos manager, consultant. Item N is our hearing coordinator, that's our asbestos manager, consultant. Items OPQ and R are change orders in the amount of approximately $55,000 for the new wing. S and T are contingency allowances for the engineering, a company called Central PAP, which is approximately another $30,000. Item B is our approval for stipends for ticket takers, ticket sellers, faculty timers, et cetera, for all the extracurricular activities and the lot, and also W, there is no increase in fees for individuals to attend the games. Items Y and Z are also additional change orders in the amount of $60,000. Item double A, and I want to thank Mr. DeAndrea for really going out and securing this lease purchase. Mr. DeAndrea, what was the percent that you got for this, the interest rate?
3.22%.
That's awesome, that's one of the best rates I've heard in a while to fund the $757,000 worth of equipment that was in the board report last time, which was for the computers and so on. Items CC, which is on page seven, is another change order for Val Cola.
Dr. Ralph Bannister?
And I was going to let you just comment on a few of them. Well, I see C is a correction. I previously brought it to the board as a change order and found out when reviewing the records, it should have been deleted or as a contingency. I'm sorry, Mr. DeAndrea. Is there any questions with section two?
Do I?
Yes, please, we have to use the...
Yeah. First of all, he will stand in the check in the church of school boards. Second was the prior application on the change orders for the fuel hoods. These are contingency change orders, if you will. We need to have these fuel hood issues associated with phase one resolved by the opening of the school in order to get our permanent certificate of occupancy for phase one, more than you got a temporary. Basically, where we stand with these fuel hoods, is that the architect maintains that the current fuel hood design meets code and is sufficient. The building department maintains that the current design does not meet code and is not sufficient. The architect has contacted the DCA and described what they believe to be the case, and the DCA has said, you're right. The building department has contacted the DCA and described a different scenario which they believe to be the case, and the DCA said, you're right. So we were sitting in a quite of a quandary, and I suggested from being in business that maybe we should get the DCA, the architect, and the building department all in the same room and discuss this matter and come up with a reasonable conclusion based upon what actually exists. Well, the DCA doesn't do that sort of thing. So what we are doing is what they have agreed to do, is take a look at the plans for the as-built fuel hoods, what's currently there, and based upon the plans which represent what's there, make a ruling on whether or not they believe it's properly constructed and meets code. If it does, we will be rescinding these change orders and we won't be awarding. If it doesn't, we will proceed with the $50,000 to correct it to the code that is required. But at least we'll have an independent person giving a determination on this. By the way, these fuel hoods are in the chemistry room, so used for the exhaust, for any type of chemicals that combine and produce an effect of oxygen. We're trying to save it with that.
Any other questions for section two? Yes?
Question on the bills, on page four, the utility bills, central, central vision power and light. Is anyone, Mr. DeAndrea, Mr. Dr. Ralph Bannister, aware of why there's such a large difference in utility usage between schools? One elementary school will send $3,000 and another one at $6,000, $7,000. Why would there be such a difference?
I can tell you that Truman School is basically the one that has center air conditioning systems, so their bills are normally higher because they have air conditioning and improvement, but the others, that's really, all the other are really the system.
That answers that.
It answered your question. We're really pushing hard to conserve energy, we're trying to go green, we sit with our administrative team, anything from saving paper, cartridges for, you know, printers, I mean, I'm very into all that stuff, and we talk about the kid about the fact that all my stuff comes, there's always stuff on the back of my papers. So we're really recycling, conserving energy, we're really trying to do that, and you're right, shutting lights off, conserving the electricity, the gas, and so on and so forth, because it's so expensive, and you're right. And we're really trying to do the right thing. Any other questions with section two?
On fee, the stipends, are there any changes on those?
Yes, 4%, as the rest of the GMC, so we're just following suit. Any other questions with section two? With none, moving to section three, non-certified personnel. You have a resignation, some transfers, a correction regarding a black seal, some employment, and substitute pay. There is also an addition, which will come in the letter of I in this section, and it will read, "The Board of Education is requested to rescind the increment withholding from Fred Box at its meeting on June 24, 2008, and impose in its place a three-day suspension without pay effective July 21, 2008." Any questions with section three? With none, moving to section four. We have a few retirements, a resignation, some what is called individual student improvement plan, teachers that assist over the summer, pregnancy leave, changing credit, reemployment of nurses, guidance counselors, librarians, and professional days for staff. I would like to comment on page 12, H. I would like to thank the technology committee and Mr. Syak for doing a wonderful PowerPoint presentation, and I would like to congratulate Barbara DeSantis, who's in charge of everything that Mr. Syak was talking about. And I am proud to say that I hired Mr. DeSantis, and one of my best moves ever, and I wish you nothing but the best, and I know you're gonna do an outstanding job, and I just wanted to comment on that. We're very proud and very lucky to have you. So again, thank you, Mr. Syak, for a job well done. The committee, which is Sandy Paul and Ms. Sutherland and all the tech people, and Eric Gluck, Malloy, and a lot of the good people that really spent a lot of time, Karen, who spent a ton of time on this, and you could see by all the information that was sent forth in that presentation, super job. I also would like to add, item N on personnel certified, the Board of Education is requested to approve a deduction reimbursement for Abigail Consola in the amount of $2,688. It's tougher than your language. Does anybody have any questions on section four, personnel certified? With none, moving to policies. As I discussed in my presentation, which wasn't as eloquent as Mr. Syak's, or didn't have really the bells and whistles, but certainly the two objectives are, you know, really, we really do try to do a lot with those. The first objective is the district three-year strategic plan, we really work hard on that, we meet every month as a district, and objective number two, which is the new year-one plan to sustain professional development for district administrators, which is part of the standard set forth by the New Jersey Department of Education. Are there any questions with section five? With none, moving to curriculum. Special services, these are the various placements and services that we provide our children, that run through pages 14, 15, 16, 17, 18. Obviously, this is the beginning of the year, so there are a lot of placements, 19, 20, And then there's the ESL program plan for the 08, 11, and I would like to thank Ms. Sutherland and her committee for doing another outstanding job putting that together, which is no easy task. And finally, I'd like to thank Ms. Bannister. Once again, if you look on page 22, we are approving five new curricula that will be for the 08, 09 school year, which is basically three library for grades four through 12, TV2, math, grade three, and you will be receiving in August a detailed synopsis and summary of every single curricula that has been approved, the date it's been approved, as well as you'll receive an updated textbook list that you've gotten last year, the actual books that we use. Does anybody have any questions with section six? Yes, Mr. Lumbert?
I'd like to just ask Ms. Duffy, the out-of-district placements, we're looking at about 100 right now, and last year at this time, we were at, if I'm not mistaken, over 130? I'd just like to, how have you achieved that reduction?
Ms. Duffy, please use the microphone. You have one also.
I think it's been a very coordinated effort of shot study team members and the teachers, like our whole department really, analyzing who we can bring back to district, what programs we can begin that gets them back to district, and working hard to move students to a least restrictive environment, and that goes all the way from out-of-district placements through moving them out of ICS into general ed roster. So we're pushing things into the least restrictive environment, and we're able to save a lot of out-of-district placements that way.
And it's in the best interest of the student also.
Absolutely, absolutely.
That's great.
Mr. Bisham?
Mrs. Duffy, I have two questions for you. First of all, this past calendar year, how many students in our programs have we graduated as such in our, in our, in our...
Out-of-district graduates?
No, out of our special needs students. Usually every year, there's a certain number of students that are capable of moving on, I'll use that term.
So you don't mean graduated from 12th grade, you mean exited specialized programs?
Yes, they exited, whether through completion of the high school program or the age limit.
All right, so you're talking about aging out, one way or another, graduating?
Graduation and aging out. It's getting around that it's cheaper to move to Saro and get a good education for your child than to stay in a district that doesn't provide the services that we do, which only adds to the expense that we incur in our district, you know what I mean?
I can't apologize for that. So I...
No, 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 what I'm saying, you know, because the word keeps doing such a darn good job, you know, that eventually, you know, we're gonna absorb...
Yes, I understand that, but those services would have to be provided in some way, and I think we're working out providing them in the most efficient way, and in a way that is best for students, like I was saying before, in the least restrictive environment, that really encourages high expectations and encourages really a lot of success in our programs.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions with section six?
I just, Mrs. Bannister, I read the library, the TV, the, 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 the...
The forensic one and two, they're really good, too, also, they've done a fantastic job on those. Just wanted you to know that, like I said, Ms. Bannister and supervisors and principals, especially Ms. Bannister, reads thousands of pages of this curriculum every single week, especially now, it's all coming down right now.
It's not interesting reading?
No, it's not, but it is definitely important. Section six, with that being done, section seven, co-curricula, these are middle school activities that are listed, Career Council College Fair is being held at Woodbridge High School, TIGS Leadership Conference, you have the senior class trip, you have a resolution for membership into the NJSIAA, you have the Higher Health Point Medical Group of Old Bridge, Boston Football Games, and there's the list of game schedule, which is listed at that website, which is right below that, at wwwhighschoolsports.net, and you'll see just about everybody in the state of New Jersey that you'd like to know the games and literally order them on. Any questions with section seven? Yes?
On letter C, this TIGs Leadership Conference, I have a question about the conference, I just have a question, because this question comes up frequently during the course of the year. This is being paid by the school board, how do we determine that this one is being paid? This $2,300 is being paid, and then at other times, we read that the parents are picking up, the kids are fundraising, how is that distinguished?
These trips, as far as I know, are usually picked up by the Board of Education. Trips that are not sponsored through the curriculum are not being picked up, and that's only a few. Like, for example, the students that go on a trip to Florida, we don't pay for that. But we do pay for Willatory, we do pay for student council, we do pay for TIGS, FBLA, we pay for all the old school sponsored activities.
The sad trip, National Conference of Districts in Arizona, which is paid by sponsors.
Right, sometimes we get sponsors, sometimes DuPont, it depends, like, right here, you have, which is SAFE, which is awesome, Mrs. Bannister, always in her organization, really does put a lot of money into these organizations. But Willatory, they're constantly going on trips from the elementaries, the middle school, I think that's just an offshoot, right, of TIGS is an offshoot of Willatory.
Right, but it's just like, sometimes like student council, they fundraise a lot.
Sometimes they fundraise.
Or they are trips. So do you know if this was fundraised for at all, or is this, do we pick up the total cost?
We're picking up, we're picking up, we're picking up most of the cost for this, and some of the money is being offset by SAFE.
Okay, so do we know if you're paying for things that are related, that have...
We normally pay for most of the trips for TIGS, Willatory, okay, and FBLA, those types of things, unless we get a donation from someone that usually does go in. And again, sometimes they go on an inordinate amount, sometimes, for example, if they go on more than one or two trips, they then, so that they would get approval, they would go out and fundraise for the extras, like sometimes they go to Great Adventure for their end of the year trip. They fundraise for that because there's a lot of kids going to that, it's very expensive.
Also, if the advisors, as I was saying, if the advisors are paid advisors, then it's a school curriculum sponsor.
Correct.
And like I said, it's not paid advisor, so that was...
No, that's a clause.
Sponsor, that's a clause, so that's a distinction. I guess the LA is part of the curriculum, but it's always been a diamond, I understand.
Any other questions with section seven? With none, moving to section eight. These are transportation waivers, approval bids, and some field trips, and some community service activities. Any questions with section eight? With none, that concludes my report.
Before I open up to the public on the agenda items, any further board discussion? If not, at this time, I would open up to the public for anybody that wants to ask for speech or provide comment on the agenda, and that also includes the renaming, the naming of the music suite after Mr. Bon Jovi. If anybody wants to come up, please come up, state your name and address for the record, and if you don't want to be videotaped in this bill, please, please come out.
It's been a while since I made a mute, right? I think I would share Shirley's view and tell Dana that's a cop-out, right, you know, on that field, right? But I wish you luck, is maybe these folks have a naming problem on the building, a little problem in the last two years, right? You had trouble naming a building, unnamed a building, and naming it again. So good luck with that one, right? On the Bon Jovi, Phyllis, I think you need to reach out quickly, and there might be some other people in the audience that could shed light on this, too. My circle of influence these days is the band and the choir corner of the room, more or less, and when Bon Jovi came, '06, spring '06, I believe it was, right? I joked in the, at a parent group, right, you know, said that we should get some money out of this guy and name the swing after him, right? And somebody, I'm gonna have to go back to all the people that were involved there, send an email out to everybody, somebody said to me, this town has gone down that road with him once before, and there is some dead blood, okay? Somebody older than Kevin, and in this town more than me, might know about that, I'll try and dig it up for you, but this might have been tried on an informal basis, certainly, right? And there might be some history there, I'll try and get you on, I don't remember who, right, you know, share that with me, right? Tech, technology, right, you know, tremendous, we all know what we're up against, I'm in my 50s, you're not, right, and we didn't learn these things when we were 20s. But they do have to caution us a little bit. Dr. Frank said something that to me is more important than technology, you know, somewhere in his, you know, two-day seminar spiel, whatever he did, retreat, right? He used the words... He used the words, "passionate people who care about kids." I haven't met an IBM PC that's passionate or cares about the kids. So please, let's not lose focus of that passion and caring, which I think is more essential, or at least equally as essential, tech-technology. When kids like Danny, D'Avanco, and Jill's daughter, and Mike's kids, and Curtis's kids, and up and coming other people, including my own, right? Uh, they're doing okay out there with just whatever technology Servo did back in '04, '05, '06, right? You know, they learned to function on those other hours on the day. They were here for sex and change, but they did what is necessary to catch up to speed on technology. So, uh, passionate people who care about the kids who teach technology, what a beautiful fit out of there. Bridging technology to my next point. It's standardized testing for college. Be careful about technology in that world, because Capone and Sylvan Learning Center, Huntington Learning Center, wanna bring your kid in for upwards of a thousand dollars and prep them in front of the screen, you know, in their booth at their offices, right? Well, until College Board and ACT.org is testing our kids in front of the screen, I think we should be prepping our kids on paper, since that's the way they take the test, is on paper, right? Segue into SAT, ACT. For the first time ever, I was about to come in that back door tonight. And if we all look on our way out, we're gonna pass somewhere between 80 and 100 books on the left-hand side on the way out. I roughly counted it, it's about 92 SAT-related books and seven or eight ACT-related books. If you're not familiar with the two tests, I help you out some all the time, right? But there are two tests out there, that every college in the country will take either one of them, okay? As you all know, I do a ton of prepping on the side. In this last go-round of June test, I tested 31 kids. SAT was June 7th, ACT was June 14th. Actually, I gave you those dates backwards, back-to-back weekends, right? 31 of the 31 kids that I sent to those tests scored higher equivalent on the ACT than the SAT. I did not take our AP students. I had some classified kids I was tutoring in this go-round. I, I do come to the conclusion that the second test, we all grew up, or live large, Kevin Stiltschmidt, thinking we lived in SAT world only, Northeast, right, you know? This was a California test, a South test, right? Please, folks, try and find me the college that won't take the ACT, it doesn't exist. Any college will take them all, right? Please, don't just have a slide on SAT prep anymore. We need to recognize there's a second test, which I truly, truly believe is better geared for the kids of Servo and South Amboy, the two districts I most recently taught at. So let's please keep an eye on that. On that note, uh, I encourage the Board of Education to send a letter to the people who are prepping our kids in this town. There are teachers in after-school programs, there are teachers within the curriculum, you know, that Jamie Brownfoot classes in. Offer to pay, encourage them to take the standardized test. Pay for it, it's four years, 50 bucks. Because, yes, I did, as you all know, I took the test. If an adult hasn't recently experienced the pain of the length of these four to five-hour tests on a Saturday morning, I question if the adult really has the right to be prepping the kids, right? You know, it's a pittance amount of money. Nobody has to see their results, you don't have to turn your stores in, right? But let them sit there for five hours and feel the pain with the kids, I think they'll make better prep people. And the only other point I got is, I don't see it written on the agenda, but I guess I'm technically allowed to talk about it now, because you brought up the air ducts, right, you know, in the high school construction, right? I don't see anywhere where we're gonna get a State of the Union at this meeting about how it will go. And I know we talked about that back in this time. You know, how's construction going, you know, how many were behind, what the problems are? I thought that was gonna be on the agenda every meeting. We started back in April and May, and I missed three meetings, so...
I gave a big story last week.
This week, you do it this week.
Okay, fine, you know, I'm sure, I'm sure we fell further behind on budget since then, right? Uh, back to Bon Jovi. If anybody, and I'm not saying he's the best choice, you know, surely we may have touched on others, and Phyllis may uncover others. But if there's anybody that wants to help Mr. Stitzer out when this is all said and done, and write the check for the difference that we've fallen behind, put his name wherever he wants his name to be put, before you come back to the taxpayers and tax us again. But a nice little update would be appreciated, at least from me, I don't know how deep you know it.
Thank you, Mr. Bowman.
Thank you.
Welcome back. Um... Ms. Drew, or Ms. Pinto, or the team? Team Pinto or Juneman? You what? I see. So gender idols, because we're opening up the damn thing. Oh, okay.
We're in support. Oh, yes. That's Pinto, nine years each time. You asked for a opinion.
Yes, ma'am.
Audience, we were from a different peer group. And we attended Bon Jovi Central Park concert, which was free, and he gave it as a gift to his fans. So in that respect, it shows his generosity. And we are for naming this week after Bon Jovi. And maybe a different perspective as looking at it is not naming after Bon Jovi. It's naming it after Bon Jovi, but not giving credit such as to Bon Jovi. But what about the teacher that brought him to where he was? I mean, the teachers there, Bill, helped him to get to where he was. Music teacher Wayne Lewis for helping him, and his stunt for God, which is a 1980s video. Put up another credit to where he is.
Well, I have, I have a son in fourth grade who's very interested in music. For him, if he heard there was a high school student named John Bon Jovi, that would so intrigue him. And it just went, I mean, I can tell him that, your interest in music, good, well, look, if you pursue it, this is how far you can go, so much for terrible goodness. So, from that standpoint, I think the students would connect with that. And be, you know, it might be that watch for nudge that comes with the state of music.
Thank you, ladies. Anyone else on the agenda before the board votes on the agenda, if not opposed to the public? At this time, Mr. Agles. Sorry, sir, can you see?
Just, uh, very quick...
You're not gonna rename your school, right?
No, as long as the H R M gets named after me in 20 years from now. I just wanted to mention, I also have never met a computer that's passionate about children, but I have met children that are very passionate about computers. Uh, the growing market right now, 68% of the market, of the advertising market, is going to two- to four-year-olds for technology, for computers. That's earlier than our kindergarten age. We have, Nintendo in 2004 spent $240 million on research and development. That's almost double what we spent in education for research and development, in curriculum and software. Uh, it is a growing market, it is important, we need to compete. Uh, it is a passion. I don't say that a computer can replace a teacher, I never would say that. What I'm saying is that the computer, just like a textbook, more important than a textbook, because a textbook is finite with information. A laptop for every computer, uh, for every student would open up the world, basically knocking down walls to student learning. Uh, something as simple as Google Translate, which is, if you haven't gone on Google, opens up for a history classroom. Right now, we're limited to history textbooks, uh, and we know about World War II, for example, from our, from our point of view. Using Google Translate, going on the internet, you can look up Japanese information, you can look up German information, translating it to English. And now the students have three perspectives, Russian, four perspectives, on an event. It's not computers that are taking over teachers, it's teachers taking computers and students to inform the world.
Thank you, Ms. Agles. Anyone else, and I'll close the public on the agenda, and I'll entertain a motion to accept the superintendent's request. You have a motion, you have a second? You have a second, you need to welcome... Um, second was Ms. Lumbow.
Mrs. Batto.
Page 12, H. I'm gonna vote H. I'm, I'm gonna vote no on H. I voted to take this position out of the budget when the budget failed in light of the financial constraints that we had. So, just in the spirit of consistency, I'm gonna vote no to fill this job. I wish Mr. Sanchez all the luck. We're lucky with the things about you, I'm sure you'll succeed in this job, but for financial reasons, I'm gonna vote no. And would have been page 13, N. So, I'm gonna vote on N.
Page 13, N, after our final answer. And soon we have some more rest. Mr. Bishah.
Mr. Dean Jay, on page three, V, I will be voting no.
Page three.
I'll vote V.
Item V, I'm convinced I'll be voting no. And along with Ms. Batto, on page 12, on H, I ask that job be put off till next year. I think with budget constraints that we're going to be facing, uh, again, you know, Santos, this has nothing to do with you. It's about the money right now that's needed, the constraints that we're going to have this year. I look at the budget, and we're going to be, I hope it's not going to be deficit, but it's gonna be cost. And the rest I will write soon.
Mr. Sade.
Uh, yes on the agenda, and on item H, well, I understand we need to be making budget cuts, we can't be cutting the bulk of curriculum.
Mr. Clark.
Yes, and I'd like to advise the Kennedy side, they add that this is about students, so it's a way to bring 50,000 dollars, you did it to settle the budget, so...
Mr. Lumbow.
Yes.
Mr. Stratt. Mr. Stratt. Mr. West, you agree? Yes, we know exceptions. And background information discussion, and have any background information for discussion? Uh, it's something like, for example, when you come back next month with some research, you have to be that one. Yes. Mr. Bishah.
A while ago, when we brought up the issue about sponsorship in our stadiums, such as if you go to some of the football stadiums or baseball stadiums, you'll see a sign, it'll say, "Roxese Hardware," we'll see maybe, uh, Camilo's Pizza, whatever it is. I was wondering if our athletic committee can look into possibly generating or doing research to our attorney of having some sponsorships, putting signs up in our football stadium or around our baseball field during the year to help generate some revenue into the sports programs? Because the reason I ask, if I'm correct, I think it was somewhere around $425,000 of, for the sports programs alone, coaching this year. I, I know it's, I, I wrote that on my resume. But, you know, if we can regenerate some extra capital coming in to the district through sports sponsorship, maybe we would have extra money that we can put into our educational programs within the district.
The people have to leave, I, I know from discussions, I believe the Miss District knowledge is a fear of legal remnants of the law.
It, uh, to answer your question, Mr. Bishah, I'm not sure, uh, I have to look at the board policy on, um, on, uh, contributions, you see the contributions, I believe that there is one. Um, but there is a process, a more complicated legal process, um, than, than one would expect, but it can be done, and if that process is followed, uh, there's no stopping the board if it wishes to move forward on something like that, which is a sponsorship.
I wish that we would look into this fact, because every dollar that we can generate through their act... I would call it advertisement, I don't call it, you know, it's called advertisement. Uh, if we could do that, it would help our programs within our district.
Mrs. Clark, as Athletic Committee Chair or something like the head's meeting? Yeah, I'll, I'll speak to you further if you want to move forward. Anybody else background information? The Delegate Committee, the School Board Association, Mr. Clark. Yes. I'm in discussion. Yeah, that's not right now.
Um, yeah. I'm hoping that... Um, I think it was in April or May, I brought up about how the State Department of Education had a 205-page draft accounting building regulations. It was gonna spell out exactly what school boards and districts need to do to become more efficient, a whole bunch of other things. Ironically, our legislators, the friends who work at Lightning Speed, decided that out of the 205 pages, 84 pages didn't need to be talked about, and gave the Commissioner of Education part launch to implement vast majority of those regulations. The District School Board has been on record in opposing not only the speed, but some of the regulations. I know I spoke to Mr. Bush, one of the things is that school board members, you used to be able to seek legal advice on a lot of, advice on a lot of issues. We now have to go to a point person in Board of Ed, I mean, in the administration, to ask them if what we're asking is actually legal. And then if we do run Mr. Bush or whatever program we go to, they're gonna have to put the date, the time, what they spoke about, how many hours, and a whole bunch of other things. Um, the regulations also go right down to how many facilities you should have, legal building, or square foot, uh, not using glossy paper, you know, a whole bunch of limitations that are gonna create a bureaucratic nightmare, in my opinion, and in the District School Board's opinion, for administrators, so... You know, people need to keep abreast of your... The Commissioner has the most of timber, I think, because Dr. Phil, they'll have many of this stuff. Um, so, be aware. You gotta follow work.
Just to, just to clarify, uh, Mr. Clark, the Commissioner, as a result of legislation that was passed a week ago yesterday, as you described, the part launch of the Commissioner to enact regulations, she has, uh, until one year, uh, one year from last week to enact whatever regulations she thinks appropriate that represent efficiency of, of, of school district, which is a, obviously a large, uh, and, and, rather wide standard.
Mr. Clark, there was an editorial section today of the Director of the District School Board Association, not President, but the Director, just had an article explaining what you talked about. So if you have the Home News Tribune at home, or the Atrey Park Press, go to the editorial section, and you'll see the article that you wrote explaining something that was passed. Mr. Clark was explaining it.
Talk for yourself. Okay, um, next, and on the discussion is Paralink, and you wanna talk about that, Ms. Paralink?
Certainly. We've been, uh, checking out a couple of vendors to find that, and some sort of notification as well as attendance, a check system to the district. We have to look at a number of systems, and we believe that this one, uh, for the price of $2.40 a student, a looting price for three years, provides the services we need at this time at the cheapest price. So I'm looking for more direction, and if everyone agrees that Bill approves the Parent Link contract, we can even approve that tonight if we so wish.
And the Parent Link is, the notification's...
Notification, they'll notify up to, I believe it is six telephone numbers per student, no duplicate calls per student. They can do multiple question surveys, so if we wanted to do a foreign language survey of the parents, we could do that via phone. Um, calls will go home to students who are absent, to parents to notify them that students are not in school. This isn't a program that looks into grades, that was one of the more expensive options. Uh, it is considerably more money, and the new database system that we will begin implementing next year has that as a built-in, so we won't need to pay for it.
Any board discussion, any questions? Mr. Clark. Okay, Ms. Batto, you go.
Is there, um, other than the emergency portion, when you're talking about doing surveys, is there an opt-out mechanism?
Yes.
You tend to not like...
If you don't want to be notified, that can, that can be arranged.
Opt to just take the emergency portion and nothing else? Can you do that, can a parent do that, so that if it's an hour, you're notified from emergency, or you want to participate in surveys, or polls, or anything like that?
You can choose, you can choose what announcements you will be getting. Um, in the standard package? They're telling me yes.
Mr. Clark.
Um, I'm so excited about this, my district, we have a similar type system.
Decision district. Decision district.
In the district where I work at.
Okay, got you.
We've had this system for over a year, and, um, for instance, the high heat day, we notified over 17,000 people in less than 11 minutes. So not only is this for keeping our parents informed about emergency closings or early dismissals, but for attendance purposes, uh, a lot of parents may not know that their child may not be in school, goes on a family home. What's even better about this is, uh, parent with cell phones and BlackBerrys and work phones, he has the capability of dialing five numbers in a few seconds, so he reaches every single access point as a parent that we need, and almost instant payment. Like, in case of a major problem in the school, you know, keep parents informed of what's going on, and notify immediately that there is a problem. It's just, it's a great way of bringing the parents... It's just, it's a great way of bringing the parents more to the fold and getting them more involved in the town's nature and allowing us to do things. The best part is, it can be quite where each individual school, if all the lessons have a BlackBear, it can send a signal of just to the all our school parents. So this is great.
It'll be great for those events where they're annual events, but on different dates, depending on if it's elementary, you know, middle or high school. Certainly, we can inform parents, the parents, and that way those announcements will, will, I believe, help us to involve the parents more within the district. It's also a great bird for our PTOs when we call for an emergency closing or an early dismissal that wasn't forecast. The PTOs, their leaders, their executive directors, presidents, officers, and volunteers come in and help with the calls. And we were just speaking recently, Charlene Junen and I, she's preparing her emergency notification card for her parents next year and some parents put down five numbers. So when they have to notify that parent that there's an emergency, you know, or early dismissal, they've got to make five phone calls to try and find out which one that parent is that. It's very time consuming and I believe she'll have some comments on this.
Is it a text message? No, so it's only a telephone call, so it'll be a voice now? They opted not to use the text capabilities because there are fees involved with that.
And you have a board discussion?
It's a good discussion, it's been having most of the circumstances.
Yes. We've used it, we used it once for the early dismissal for heat. As a matter of fact, the salesperson was speaking with us when it was decided we were going to have an early dismissal. So we worked with Mrs. Ranowitz and within fifteen minutes, the call started going on.
Any more?
Again, that was just to the home number, not to the.
No, no, it was a post.
Was this, was this a budgeted?
Yes.
Was it a budgeted?
No, it's over.
Thirty-five.
Ten thousand was budgeted.
Any more to post with? So if we vote outside, I'll quote it from Publicity, you can comment before we vote on it. But if anybody not willing to vote on it, please, if you understand what it is, we've budgeted for it and there's a secret budget, I think for the additional amount of money, it's a service that provides. And if not, okay, so what we'll do is, before we vote on that, we'll look at the point. As a matter of fact, I'll do that now, anybody can comment, public, excuse me, want to comment on the parent link system? There, quote, yes, Mrs. Junen, yes.
Charlene Junen, excuse me, as Mrs. Sullivan mentioned, we have really rough time to get last early dismissal. Parents, if they're not aware of it, snow days sometimes they're aware of, they tend to check for it. The heat dismissal took a lot of them off guard. That call did go out and by, you know, the second or third hour, we were making phone calls to parents, they said, "Okay, we already got our phone call." But that only went to the home number, which the system would be great if it called it all, but to just call a home number literally doesn't do us any good as a PTO because we do call. There were times I did easily call six numbers because they have their phone in office.
I think that was just a test.
It was just a test, but if you're talking a system that would call that many numbers, it would be wonderful for us because literally there were a group of us that spent the entire day on the phone making phone calls because we didn't want anything to let it bust out. And there are parents who will not check their home numbers at this, so it needs to go to their cell. And work, yeah, that would be great, so PTOs are definitely favored that, just early dismissal.
Any else want to talk about comments?
I just want to comment about the home numbers.
Sure, since I haven't come up to state to make any comments.
I'm sorry, Karen Ranowitz, I work for Mrs. Sullivan. Like Mrs. Sullivan said, at the time we had the sales rep for parent when sitting with us when Dr. Alfano made the decision to close early, the representatives said, "Get us your data, we'll make the call." I literally had five minutes to go into eight databases and get the information to the sales reps so we could get it to parent link to make the call. Within fifteen minutes, we did that. If I had longer, we could have gotten data for all the emergency numbers, cell phone numbers, work numbers, but we didn't, we had like five minutes to get the calls down, which is why they went to home numbers. But like Mrs. Sullivan said, the system will take up to six phone numbers.
Speaking from the perspective of being a building principal, I can certainly attest to what happened on that early dismissal. We spent, and I'm a small school, we spent almost three hours on the telephone, every single one of us, and many of us have to call many, many more numbers than we'd been five because many people are not at those numbers to receive that information. And I think this would be phenomenal help to all of us and wouldn't tie up the building either with everybody using all the telephones and having no accessibility. So I know we would like it.
Yeah, I think there are more districts that have it than don't. We're one of the last ones.
District, do you take your house?
I don't.
So do you make any phone calls or it just goes out? What matters, and you don't know if anybody answered the phone or not, like how does that?
Yes, they give us a report that tells us if it was an answering machine, a live response, or no response, or a non-working number.
So what is it, is there like something that you normally do here, look at, do the other schools look at that and calling numbers that there's an issue with, or do you get that report right away?
Yes.
Okay.
And it's, they stop calling after they get in touch with the first phone line? Yes.
Any other comment? Yes, Mr. Dean?
That's the thing, so if we're going to go with the system, PTO is not going to make phone calls anymore. Is that correct? We won't have, so we're not even going to put out the papers, why waste paper asking for phone numbers?
Well, you might want to take the phone number in case you have a certain message that you have to get out to your parent.
Well, we could always call the school and ask for our phone number if we had to.
So you can't get it to them. If you secure, the school cannot share, even with the PTOs, personal information about students, the Family Rights of Privacy Act, that's why we advocate that the PTOs at least get a home phone number from parent members, so if you need to contact them, that you use the information that they give you, but the school cannot give you that number.
Well, that would, if they were a member, they would be on our PTO member list.
Correct.
So when we put out emergency contact forms, though, that goes out to everybody, whether they're a PTO member or not.
Correct, but that's a service you provide and the parents give you willingly.
Right.
We, as a school district or building principal, can't give you that information.
But basically, if we're not going to do the emergency closings, emergency dismissals, early dismissal phone calls anymore, we only need to contact our members, which we would have on our PTO membership list.
I would think that would be realized, but it's always good to have a phone number.
Okay, but we will not have to make our early dismissal phone calls anymore.
I don't see any reason to.
Okay. Thank you.
Anybody else in the public? If not, I'll close the public, I'll give a motion to approve the per, the gentleman's second. Please, second, I got Mr. Clark and Mr. Kenzai.
Let me read your resolution.
Sure, okay. Hey, Timmy, Timmy?
I have it, but I'll, you know.
Good.
The Board of Education is requested to approve for a three-year agreement.
Can you use the microphone?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Mr. Kenzai. I'm getting a little punched on here. The Board of Education is requested to approve for a three-year agreement between 2008, 2011 with parent link at a cost of thirteen thousand nine hundred and twenty dollars for the standard package, an additional charge of thirty-five hundred for the first year for the initial setup, configuration strategy, onsite training, and twenty-four-seven ongoing support. Also included is a lock-in renewal cost of two thousand forty cents per student for the duration of the contract, which may be broken at any time in the three-year period.
Okay, I have a motion.
Yes. Stop, is it?
Yes.
Okay. All right. I got a motion, I have a second. Do you have a question?
Yeah.
Okay.
So it says that it can be broken at any time in that three-year period, just by, they cannot raise it, is that correct?
They want to, but they, they locked in that ten calls, which, um, it's private, so I gave some discount. And they'll give us that same price for years. So what happens if there's a low price and we're not asking? Anyway, it's not.
We had more discussion, so we can, there's a couple of wants to speak about this particular issue. If not, I'll close it. I got a motion, I have a second, roll call. Mrs. Batto?
Yes.
Mr. Bishat?
Yes.
Mr. Kenzai? Yes. Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Lenbock?
Yes.
Mrs. Stratt?
Yes.
Mrs. Stratt?
Yes.
Mr. Jalaskey?
Yes.
And Mr. McLeod? Yes. It's fair with me, I have a couple of things. First of all, the board training, a lot of questions about board training for this ethics training at the school district accountability. What I'd like someone in your office to do is to see which board members needs to do that. Because this, the way this is written, it goes to school boards.
That's from the state of New Jersey.
Thank you.
I have a full agreement because I couldn't figure it out either when I.
Okay, you can ask someone in your office.
I'm going to have to refer to Mr. Clark.
To just, now, now, okay, send me an email on what board members need to do. Okay, because we all have different types of training, this has to be between first year of the second term, second year of the third term, third year of the first term, it's ridiculous. So find out who needs law and law and why we can get this done.
Mr. Andrew, to help me, I think two weeks ago, there was a green box in school boards that delineated specifically where you are at your time of training you need.
I'm confused.
I don't want any board member to go discerning and get that.
I read it as if we have to go to the legal community.
We went to the one February sixth, the three.
Yeah, but I don't.
I think that's suffice.
No, I don't think that counts. I think that was last.
Find out, find out.
No, now we have to go to another one. We have to go to legal.
Anyone who is in years two or three of your first term requires training. Anyone who is just newly re-elected requires training.
Right, and that was the, if it was the second term, that's illegal.
If you're talking this year, you're talking by the end of this school year, June, July.
Email.
But if anyone's.
You know, which is.
It's pretty simple, these school.
They're not getting email.
The school ethics commission by law has on file who did what and who didn't do what because there are penalties involved, who didn't do it by the light of the law.
To document.
So, yeah.
Why didn't you do it until October twenty-first? I thought we can train at the convention. I hope these courses are being offered.
Well, yes, so you could point, we need to find out, we need to find out email. Okay, it's closed, next slide. The mayor called me last night, there's an individual who represents the Reed Foundation that has these collection bins for used clothes around town. And they gave a check to the borough last night for forty-two hundred dollars. Five hundred cent collected these things. And the gentleman was interested in saying that the school district was interested in having them place some of these things on our schools to collect, you know, used clothing, private, those types of things, and really get money for those things. The individual said, as spoken, he's a board member in another town that operates this foundation and he has a contract with Woodbridge School District that he gave up since he's been doing his seventy-five case. So, if the board is thinking this is something we might get to, I'm going to just give that information to Mr. Leandre and you can find out what the specifics are, what these things are. I know they have limited room and apartment lots for taking up space.
The other issue, the board discussed this once before, the only other concern at that line where the board had was the maintenance of the areas because when you put these boxes in place, it's great to get the cash, but what happens when someone leaves a couch sitting outside the box? And it's responsible for moving that couch.
Good question.
So that was the only concern I know the board had at this time.
Same, I can only pass it on. I'll pass it on, okay. Another thing I wanted to talk about, some of the things that have happened in the district. You heard today about the technology, we're heading in the right direction, we're being proactive, I think progressive in technology, we're moving forward in our areas. One thing that I, we received this past week is the New Jersey AS scores. I don't know if you are all familiar with those, but those are the standardized tests that the state does in elementary schools. And when I looked at this, I had to look again because the numbers are pretty darn good. For example, Language Arts, district-wide average, we have a total student population of proficient and advanced proficiency of over ninety percent. And looking at the regular schools, they're well into the nineties as well, in Language Arts. And in math, overall passing for the district, proficient and advanced proficiency is over ninety-four percent. Some of the schools is as high as ninety-seven percent of the pass rates in math. Now, this is, this is the elementary schools, but this is where it starts. And I know this always hasn't been the case if you look at the history of the standardized test score in the district. But what's most notable, that's more impressive, is the state benchmark is only seventy-three percent. I mean, no child left behind and the state requirements, you well exceed them. But we exceed the state benchmark regulation for special education schools. And that's what I think is most phenomenal, we have schools with ninety percent pass rate for special education. And one school that had a hundred percent pass rate in special education. So, you know, this is pretty noteworthy, I think is indicative, as I mentioned in the past, of educational leadership within the elementary schools, and this one we're making note of. On the HESPOS scores that, and this was all of a sudden that the curriculum committee met on June thirtieth that you took a look at. The HESPOS, which is a high school proficiency assessment that one needs to pass to graduate high school, we exceeded the state benchmarks in both areas, no child left behind every year, increases the benchmark that you have back at the classroom. And we exceeded the both of Language Arts and Math from HESPOS by more than three points. And we needed to, and met all the academic, really progress requirements. We looked at the SAT scores in two thousand six, two thousand seven, although they were above or on average with our district active group, the committee absolutely agrees, there's more work that needs to be done there. And I think one of the steps we could fit this year is realigning the math curriculum in the middle school, where we're exposing more kids to algebra early and trying to get away from the algebra one part A, algebra one part B. And my own analysis of this is that we were having kids taking the SATs, the new SAT test, which is heavy on algebra two concepts, but they haven't had algebra two yet. So, you know, that didn't pass the common sense test. And I think ideally we would need to be, there's a kid going into the SATs who have taken at the minimum algebra one, algebra two, and geometry, and being enrolled in pre-cal or better when they're taking the SAT test. And that's something that we still need to look at. Well, Mr. Bogey mentioned, I'm very excited about it, the ACT, and I'm a big fan of the ACT test. And that's supposed to be on our agenda for next year for me to talk about the benefits of that test because there are two distinct different tests, the ACT, which has, and the SAT, which has, and the way you take the test. ACT is more concentrated on what you learn in high school versus a more reasoning test, like the SMP test. And there's a lot of discussion that I could have Mr. Bogey about that in a quick committee. New courses that are starting up in September, I know we have the robotics course that you mentioned, we have three segments, we have kids in all of that. We're off from French, it's one and two, but I don't have the enrollment figures on that yet, I failed to ask. And we also have the Cisco Systems, which is computer networking as well. So again, we're moving in that direction, I think we're being very proactive in that area. AP Physics Survey, I'm a big fan of AP Physics course, and AP Physics Survey was done, it was a comprehensive survey. And we're looking at, we have seventeen students that are be eligible to take AP Physics in two thousand eight, two thousand nine, or two thousand nine-ten. We're going to have the prerequisites completed in order to take AP Physics. And the survey went all the way down to ninth grade, we're saying, if an AP Physics class was available, would you take that? And of course, they pulled the kids into taking physics now. Another issue that the curriculum committee talked about that I'm very excited about is foreign language. I've never, didn't happen with the foreign language currently that we have here in Seville, which is basically French and Spanish. I think in the middle school, from how quick they're going to even take the Spanish. I've been to many different countries and there's Spanish, I know it's a popular language here, but when you go outside of the northwestern hemisphere, Latin America, not a lot of people speak Spanish. And we need to make sure that we are looking at our kids and grooming them to take the proper language differences. And I've used these examples before, if you go to the Middle East, Middle Eastern countries, and talk to the political and military elite of rulers, a lot of them speak European languages. Well, they all speak English, but they predominantly speak German. And they're more excited to tell you about their engineering, they do stuff that they studied in Germany. German is a language that is most spoken in Europe other than English. And it's something that if we have kids that are interested in engineering and math, that we should be having a course offering where they can speak German. Kids that are interested in international business, Chinese and Russian, obviously, are a language they're going to look at. So what we're trying to do is, is to put out a language survey, um, this coming for, not only the students, but to the parents, to say, we, we have it. Okay. Right. Okay. Um, to look at that, and I know how kids are, you know, if they, if they, Russian, which is a harder language than Spanish, you know, kids are going to gravitate towards what's easier, but I think that's where we have to take a proactive role in the counseling aspect of it, to gear kids into the right direction in language-based interest. And that's another thing that we're going to be looking to do, because I think we're talking about, all we talk about the twenty-first century, there are emerging, uh, languages, and those are not Spanish and just French. There are Chinese, and Russian, and German, and I call them crossover languages. We need to start off on these. Last thing I want to talk about is something that I find this case study, uh, but nevertheless, I want to speak about. And I know, uh, some of the public has talked about, I'd like to see more dialogue among the board members. Um, there's a couple of things in, in the newspapers that came out recently, um, that I want to put, put to rest right now. And one of them was, um, the reference to the position that we have lieutenant Knight as a supervisor of, um, technology, which doesn't exist. You know, but everybody is sitting around this paper from here to here unnoticed, that that was never that popular. And everybody understood that. When we budgeted for it, when we talked about it at the bill, when we talked about it at the Borough Council, when we, when we were on budget, that was a teaching position, a certified person, there was a member of the, say, the education management. And for anybody to refer to it from this point on as a supervisor of technology, at the very best, is being disingenuous, at the worst, is being clouding the science. Let everybody know that that is not a supervisor of technology, is never a supervisor of technology. It's a technology integration feature, that if we spend all this money on advancing our technology, we should be educated through that reason. And that was the whole thesis of putting this position. Since I've said that, one of the things in the paper that I, I, I want to bring out and have discussions among the board members about the district not being proactive, the district not being aggressive, and the district not heading in the direction that they keep us in goal. And I, 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 I look at that and I left the impression that, well, um, the rest of the board, you know, we don't know what's going on, um, and are, uh, not in tune to the direction that the district is going to be going. And, um, I want to open this up in the board discussion, if anybody wants to defend those comments, or if anybody wants to provide any additional comments down with the board members that thinks this needs to be discussed. Do you have anything to add, Mr. Bishot?
I would like to say...
I'd like to know what you're referring to, but my name is not mentioned in the paper. Is there something that I mentioned in the paper that you're satisfied with, Mr. Mackin?
I'm just referring to certain comments, uh, that were said about not getting happy with the record that the issues have begun, and the rationale for not approving, um, the renewal of the, uh, the, uh, super commission.
Well, I had an issue of finance at this time, and that's what you're referring to. Right? You know, uh, right now, uh, I've kept looking at the budget, et cetera. I, I can see there's issues that, you know, we may be sure. And that's one of the issues that I brought up in the paper when I made my comment on it, okay? I mentioned also, which you just brought up right now, about I'd like to see foreign languages in AP Science courses. You brought that up. I mentioned that in the paper also. But that's, is I out of bounds for making my comment of something that I felt, uh, thought that we should be looking into?
No, I, I, I just, we all understand about our budgets, but there's two votes there. There's a vote to approve the salary, there's a vote to extend the contract. There's two distinct different votes. And I think the rationale...
If you approve the contract, the salary goes along with it, Mr. Mackin. So there's, there's two different areas, you know? If you're going to combine both of them, you know, there's issues that, uh, you know, first of all, let's get one thing straight. When we took that vote that night, we never got really into the discussion of what we were going to discuss as far as the contract itself, about what was our input? We came to a contract, and it was either yes or a no vote. And everyone knows that. There was no discussion on how anyone felt about any contract removals or anything, whether, whatever session you want to go into.
Well, for anybody who votes yes or no, you have opportunity to discuss anything you want.
Right. I just voted no, and I kept my opinions to myself, and I think I'm entitled to keep my opinions to myself. I don't have to rationalize to anybody else why I vote whatever way I vote.
Well, I, I disagree. I think it's, uh, it's a board member's responsibility, if, if a board member has concerns about something, it's shared with the rest of the board.
Well, we never had the opportunity to do it that night.
We had plenty of opportunities.
No, we did, no.
We had opportunity, right?
It's after the fact. It's irrelevant. Well, I'll tell you what, I have my notes in home, Mr. Mackin. If anything, I will bring my notes in.
You can bring them next week, another time. You can bring them next week. Because I think there, there are things in the paper that make our job difficult. No difficulty than it needs to. Where if there are issues that board members have, I think it's just a professional courtesy to share that with the rest of the board, before I have to read it on the front page of the newspaper.
I was asked by a newspaper person, what my feelings are, okay? I am not going to be mum, because you or anybody else wants me to be mum on the Board of Education.
I'm not actually to be mum, I'm actually to explain. I'm actually, I'm, I'm doing the opposite.
You know, I think I've put more time in, a lot of the members on this board, I'm on more committees than any other members of this board. I've put more time in the last two years than a lot of people have put in five years on this board, okay? So if you're to question me, I think you're in the wrong boat.
Well, not question, I'm just saying there's things I've mentioned in the paper that I have to talk about, and I'm ready for the board's panel.
Just before an argument starts, just to elaborate, I, I don't think the issue necessarily was what was discussed here or not. I think part of the problem we have here is, and in this particular case is, we had a personnel committee that did these contracts. We never discussed it in pro session that night, okay? And there wasn't open book. And I, I know what you're talking about, a public response, but I think to just, to try to elaborate, what Tom was trying to say, we did not discuss those contracts that night. They were put before us from a personnel committee, okay? And then we were asked to vote. There, there was no give and take, there was no back and forth, and frankly, we never discussed them at all that night. Okay, so it did make it somewhat a little bit more difficult to throw it out there. When we did come to vote, because we had never discussed it as a board, okay, so that's... And the supervisor technology, I, I, I'm not exactly sure what it said in the paper about the supervisor technology area. I think that supervisor technology name, that came from the budget meeting that we had with the Borough Council. They wrote it on their piece of paper. I think that's how that name just got...
Mr. Backfield, you know as well as I do, is that position, is it in the future?
You're right, and I do know that. But on that, that particular night, when we received those budget cuts, that was the title. And that was probably where the newspaper brought that title from. And remember, we had a lengthy conversation that night about that title. But it wasn't for it, and I don't know where the council brought that title from. That's probably where that came from.
This board is...
I don't think it was anybody here that changed the name.
This board is set up as a, a board of committees, it's not a, a committee of the board.
I understand that.
We have committees that go ahead and do the work, and they get the guidance from the board, as we have done with the negotiations of several times. When we met the book that night, it's always open for discussion. Anybody could have discussed it, anybody could have made their comments, uh, anybody could have shared, um, their feelings or what the rest of the board. And that was not what I... And you could say that I, and I know I, for the last three years in this position, have, have always made it clear, and the rest of you can verify now, um, that any board member could speak any time they want. Uh, if you're not prepared to vote on a thing, you certainly can motion for it. Uh, and, and many other types of things. And I just think in the future, I think that it's a professional courtesy, the rest of the board, if any board members have an issue, I don't think the district is proactive, progressive, having the right direction, to have any issues, and that they discussed that before. Um, before it's put in the paper, because I got one hundred and fifteen hours of court kicks for ten nights, ten days. I come back with one hundred and fifteen emails on comments that were put in the paper. And I'm just, um, asking that if there are any issues that you're ready for the board to discuss, I think that's a professional courtesy. And, and I think from now on, that when we vote right, and I don't know if, if I can do this enough, or look in the polls, that if a board member's going to vote no, they can, they can provide rationale, you do that in other committees, in other boards and councils. If you vote no, you justify your vote. I think that's fair. And I know that I can justify every vote, no matter how controversial that I've made since I've been on the board, whether it's popular or not. So I think that's, no problem. Any, any other board members? Am I the only one?
I was, no, I was just going to say, the only thing that I would say is, I think as a board, and I think the public has said this a couple of times, is there's not enough conversation on some, and this is a major vote, and really, I think everybody's pros and cons should be put out there, because if there are cons, if there are pros, we should be going with it. But part of it too is, and I know I said this to the board and to say this publicly, is, you know, we also owe it to superintendent also in evaluation, if we are having issues or any problems, to put that into evaluations. And I think, you know, reviewing those evaluations myself after our last couple of years, I mean, all these evaluations are very good, if not the last one glowing, and then to have negative comments, I think that needed to be put into this evaluation, if people did feel that way. And to those who felt positive, or when positive comments should be in there. But I think we need to interact better, because I think we didn't do a good job here. You know, and I don't think there was enough back and forth and maybe discussion about how people felt.
She left. Yeah, just a side question. Mr. Bishot gave, gave some of his insights. The, the comment in the paper, Bob, Mrs. Backfield, is that we are not progressive and proactive. Now, maybe it was a misquote, maybe it was taken out of context. I, I'd like to have a discussion now about what is it that we'd like to see us be more progressive and more proactive now? I mean, let's, let's deal with the dead moose that's sitting on the table that's sticking out the window.
All right, I'm going to do something we discussed tonight, okay? I'm going to talk about this AP Physics course. This, this is my fourth year here, and we've been talking about it for four years. It is now still not implemented, and it's still not going to be implemented until another year. I think that in itself is, is taking way too long to implement. And this is just one course, one physics course. This is just, just cracking. I mean, if you take a look at some of the, um, course catalogs in some of the other schools, and you look at some of these, I mean, AP Physics, I mean, to me, that was just the easiest place to start. Because I would, you're probably going to find most every other district offers it. Okay? And, and I really think it's a no-brainer in the science curriculum. But when I look in, in, I don't know exactly what's in the paper, I don't know if I was misreading, or whatever, but just to explain to you. I mean, this is something that I think we need to move forward on. We talked about something, and it disappears for a year, and then it comes back, and then it's not acted upon. And this is what I mean about moving forward. Maybe it's, we're moving forward, but it's just slowly. Maybe that's a better way to define it, okay? And what happens is, this is education. This is, when you take four years to do something, you missed a lot of children here. And, and this is, these types of things are very important on these college applications, and these type of courses. This is what colleges, colleges look at. They look at, you go to these colleges now, a lot of times, if you look at SAT scores, you look at grade point areas, a lot of them don't even want to look at class right there. A lot of colleges, you'll, you'll go to these orientations, they'll tell you, they want to see what you took and what grades you got. And I, and I think the example of AP Physics on why this took so long to get this moving, I have a problem. And I don't know how long it's been talked about before I got here, or if it was talked about before I got here. But, you know, this is like, it's not going to be implemented until my fifth year. That's a long time to get one class going. So that, that is just like an example of what we can do.
No, I think numerous people want to respond, so... If it wasn't sticky, you just can't take a course and put it in. Mr. Anshas gave us a, Mr. Anshas gave us a large synopsis.
And one of the problems was that we had so few students, we could not run those kind of classes. It was not that we would want to deny any student an AP course, because I certainly and firmly believe, as everyone in this room does, that we owe our best to offer them the best. And what is better for most students who are at the upper level in AP courses? I'd love to offer them so many other things, but we are always constrained also by how many students will be going, completing whatever they need to complete to be able to be eligible for those. I mean, when you're looking at the situation, which has been several years ago that we're talking about, they only had six students here, right? But you have to recall, the way this was done this year was very different than it has been done in the past. They took a survey of the students, okay? Now, because the AP Physics course requires physics beforehand, you need the kids to know this year stat, okay? You have to go to the lower grades. This year, what they did different, which was why it was successful, is they went back to the students that said they were interested in AP Physics, and asked them if they'd be willing to change their schedule. Had they not done that, we'd be still in the same boat as we had been year after year. But these students were given the option and the opportunity to make that change and look two years down the road. That was never done before. But also, you have to remember as well, what, the, the fact is that we also look at, and it was a particular survey that you're talking about, we were discussing the numbers of students who probably took physics, who would, which they would need as a requisite to get into the AP. And in the past, that was not there, that there was not even an interest from those students prior to that. And I, I am in total agreement that we continue to offer more. I don't believe that we are, um, let me put it this way, that we are trying or attempting at our, at our, to hold any course from going forward and to offering our students something that they should have. And I think we're moving in that direction, and it may have taken several years. I'm not going to say to you that we should do anything instantly either. And I think Mr., um, Park just said that. First of all, we're trying to look at what students are going to be interested in, what's available for them, and what their needs are. And I think we have to do that in a logical and careful fashion. And whether it takes us a year or two, or what order it's rather, the timeline is, I think we have to do it properly.
I, I think, you know, as I said in the paper, I respect the opinions of the public board members. And we talked about AP Physics, and the most profound thing that was said in the curriculum meeting that, you know, surprised me, I'm not surprised by much, is, is that the whole curriculum committee, Mr. Bowden and, and Mrs. Zeichler and Dr. O'Connell, and they were excited about this. And this is the first time, they were telling me that a board of education had put so much emphasis in this. So I don't fault the administration or, or prior boards, they didn't have put the emphasis on it nearly here. And I said, this is one of the things I charted out to do, and I put myself in charge of the curriculum committee, is to look at these things and make these things happen.
Right, and I agree with you, and I do understand that, that the board is proactive in doing that. But I don't know that I necessarily agree that I could fault the prior board. Is it, is it, is that where the distinction is? Is it up to the board to go and say, oh, by the way, I was comparing our curriculum to old curios, and I think maybe we should do this? See, I don't know that I could fault a previous board to not do it.
Well, I think a lot of times, administration are apprehensive, and the board, they understand how to support it. But this is not like a business in education, this is from my experience of working in education, we can just put a needle down and say, this is what we're going to start with. We've got to get people to buy in. And we talked about, somebody mentioned about passion, about doing this stuff. And, and, and it takes a while, you know? To get people to buy in. And we did a couple of big works with this, uh, AP Physics, um, survey to make this happen. But you're right, I'm frustrated with that too, I'd like to have my kids get, get, get those scores. But we're making this happen. And it's, it's, things move slow, but we're making progress, and we're doing that. And the other thing I have to look at, in my research, as I've done this, and I look at all these schools that have these courses, especially in language, who's the district faculty of these? And you can't get away from the fact that Seville continually ranks the lowest in the state for district at our size in non-money distribution. And, and that's because of, you know, the nature of the beast that we have to deal with. And there's a direct correlation, and every standardized test that I can show you, the SAT scores from the, at the poorest district to the richest test, this is definitely a trend of fifty points in the SAT district. There's a direct correlation on how much a district is going to spend, and what we can offer our students and follow those courses.
But the, the money was never an issue with us here, as long as I did that. It's never been money...
No, but it's going to be when we, we implement foreign languages and try to find people that can teach this, add other courses. That's all going to be, the textbooks that are associated with that, um, software and, and technology that's associated with that. It's all going to be cost-effective. And it's not going to be, it's, it's way too, and we're going to have to make those decisions. Anybody else? Do I have any? Mr. West?
Just to, uh, in nineteen ninety-eight, my daughter graduated from Serpents. And, uh, they had seven, they had an exceptional class. There's seventeen students that won an AP course. The junior that came forward, they said, the only way we can have this course is if you give up leaving later as a senior. And that's what they did. Instead of going six periods, they went seven, they picked up the AP course during what would have been their sixth period. We probably had a qualified person there for it. And I'm just looking at, we have budget restraints every year. We get some budgets passed, maybe we could offer the world. And I, I think we're doing a heck of a job offering what we offer now. And I know if we have enough students for any course, that we could fit it into curriculum to do it, because we have done it in the past. We have done it in the past. But there were seventeen dedicated students that wanted to do it. They went to the principal, I forgot who it was at the time, went to administration, no problem.
The last thing I want to talk about in the paper were my comments. Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'd like to go back to the voting now. I, I'm always interested when many of, when more than not, we go yes and a couple vote no. And I'm curious why, because I would, I could say, maybe they could point something out to me that I didn't think about. So, so I would like that justification. I'm not saying you need to justify to me, but give me, you know, give me... I'm not saying you need to justify to me, but give me, you know, give me a little background, and maybe you'll show me something that I hadn't already. So I would appreciate that.
The last thing, I guess, certainly, come on.
One more comment on this topic, and it's really a question for the entire board. One of the things that Dr. Alphano needs from us is clear direction in terms of where the district is going. We approved tonight year three of our strategic plan. Is everyone happy with the way year three is framed out, the objectives that have been put forth, and where the district is going in the next 3 hours and 65 days? Because if we're not, we really need to have a discussion at our next meeting about that plan. And maybe we won't get unanimous, but even that's fine, we don't all have to be unanimous. But I think the discussion at least needs to occur, so we all know what's in that plan, what the objectives are, what Dr. Alphano and his team are gonna be working for, and where we're going. So is everyone happy with the plan that we approved tonight?
Yes, sir. Yes. Is that a yes? As if not, speak up.
Just so that you know, we are consistently looking at that plan. So we as a group, as a steering committee, we welcome any comments, obviously, that you have. We're looking at it right now over the summer to see if we want change in the action plans. And we have, if you see, we're gonna let it finish out, because we still have the June 2008 to get, we haven't gotten all the information. Then we're gonna take a look at it again come January, because we're starting a new school year, we're actually only six months behind. But we're always looking to revise that. That's why now we're giving the entire APT reports to all the members of the Board of Education. It's a very global plan. Now with the New Jersey CUSAC, that's gonna fall right into those two plans. So I do appreciate that the board, you know, is very much into the strategic plan and wants to move forward, and I understand that. But understand one thing, when I came here eight years ago, what was our thrust? Our thrust was our scores are low, and we need to push them up. That was the big issue back when I came here in 2008. We were very close to failing math, and we were very close in our language arts literacy. And that's when we put over tutorial programs, and we really concentrated very hard on the testing. Now, the last couple of years, we're moving forward, and the direction of the board saying, look, we wanna put in more AP, we wanna put in more SATs, there's nothing more that I would like to do. I had a long conversation with Mr. Brown today about these kind of things, about with his team. So we will certainly, you will be hearing from me each meeting in regard to these kind of things. So we're also challenging the supervisors and the other management people here. So we hear you loud and clear, I have, I'm very lucky to be part of Sable Public Schools, and I wanna work just as hard as I did to try to continue this thrust forward. And thank you, and it's hot.
Mr. Limb.
Just a comment regarding what Mrs. Stratton said before, more discussion is always, is always good. But regarding our administrative team, if their evaluations speak for themselves in the past, they've always done, continued to do excellent job.
The last thing I wanna mention about is my own comments in the paper about pay raises. We have a number of employees in our district who are not unionized, who are not in the Sable Education Association, they're not the principals or supervisors, which is out there. And the board approved, not unanimously, but approved pay raise between 3.5 and 4.0 depending on the job. And I made a comment in there about paying people the industry standard to retain people. Unfortunately, we lost a very good math teacher in middle school. I'm not gonna mention names, because this is an individual that everybody loved, he had him. He was happy here in Sable, he was working on his PhD. Went to a course for nine overage. He was making $8,000 to $10,000 more, and not having to contribute to his health benefits like our teachers do here, $1,800 a year. I wanna maybe, I live in a fantasy land, but maybe someday I want somebody to come from these funds with overage to Sable and say, I'm going to Sable, it's okay with me. But I'm realist. We don't pay people the industry standard, we're not gonna retain them. And that's been a concern of mine, and I voiced this at a candidate night when I first ran for the Board of Education, it's a turnover rate that we have, especially critical. If you're a math or a science teacher, especially if you have a special education endorsement, you're a free agent. You're gonna go to the highest bidder, and they're out there. And to retain these type of people in the district. And then we have people that are not directly in the classroom, but they're doing very critical jobs in the district. And I, there were some people that were saying 2% pay raise. And if you're making $40,000, you get 2% pay raise, you get 800 bucks, so divide that by 12, and again, divide that by two, you pay the raise. You make one department less take home money if that boosts into a different tax rate. It's not about doing you any favors. And I don't think a 3.5 or 4.0 pay raise is extravagant in any economy. And that was a justification of my comments in the paper, and I stand by that. And if we're gonna retain people, we pay them, and Sable, again, is known as being the lowest, one of the lowest paying districts in the state, and our superintendent is one of the lowest compensated in the state of New Jersey. And what I'm saying is not make it up, it's facts, that anybody can research, looking from New Jersey School Report Law, one department in education does that. So, I know it's hot, but I figure the students can be in here for eight hours a day, we certainly can handle it for four hours. And Mr. Clark still wants to speak, I slept, opened up the conference.
I'll be fast, and I know Mr. Bogory's at you in the back though.
No, I thought he left. No.
I have to step back to your first comment about the ASCE, NJAS. Those scores were not only good, they were great. And that was part of a vision and clear leadership and absolutely the right direction that Dr. Alphano, Carlos Savo, and a whole bunch of other people started a multi-pronged approach, starting way back by making elementary schools 8 through 3, the 4 or 5 grade level, so that Dr. Agulhas could teach that group. It was interesting that Mr. Syak, during his technology presentation, touched on problem solving, because we started problem solving about 40 years ago, and those that are training in that class is reflective of how the scores are good in 2008. So this didn't happen overnight. This was pure guidance from our administrative team, it was Mr. Fallon, making the curriculum right, our staff, writing the awesome curriculum, working with it, and actually implementing that in the class. So I'm totally pleased with the direction and us. And Noah's course, and the benefit of the Vito, Tom Savo, and Gary T. Kinderberg level, so not only is our HESPIS scores in a few years gonna go up, our NDA 3 years gonna go up, and all of those. And that's years and years of hard work that started many years ago, and hopefully will continue, and will be better once we start passing limits.
I make a motion, we open to public.
Good.
I have a question.
Mr. Peckel.
Questions from the last meeting. The trailer removal for $30,000, did we get an SNL on it?
It's completed and done.
It's done, do we have to pay $30,000?
It came slightly under $29,000.
Under $29,000? Do we have an update on the status of the trap? To fix the trap?
No, we have not, we have not even looked at the practice at this point in time. We're trying to get all our other summer budgets that we have slated specifically to tie to the revenue.
Okay. And back to Glassman, now that we're in the process of closing out this year, and you're anticipating that $70,000 inferential, do we have a better number now?
Currently, we're still basically in the same ballpark, waiting for Mr. Lenkanausi to get back from vacation to get the final numbers on our investments from Bank of America.
Okay, so do you expect it to stay around some days, or do you think we're looking at?
Right now, I'm still looking at the same number. We did a good portion of the closeout of special services, we still have some areas to look at. The numbers are still generally between 1.3 and 1.5, and we're still between these 640,000 dollars.
Mr. Dandrea, book purchases, have we made any of them yet? Have we done the new reading program for the UES, Stanley UES? Have we purchased any books for the high school? Have we purchased any books for the elementary school? Mr. Bishad, in all honesty, I'm probably approving a hundred requisitions a day. I do recall seeing requisitions coming through for books as to K3, the 4 or 5 series, I don't recall, and Mr. Agulhas is here, is he in, Mr. Agulhas? He's saying today, so probably that. I know I saw K3 at some point in time for Ollit, and reference materials for the libraries, District Y. But I'm approving over 100 a day, so to know exactly which one came through, I really don't recall.
Okay, we will make all the purchases, though, for the new books for the UES.
I'm approving, as I said, over 100 a day, so as quick as they come in, they're leaving my desk and going through the process.
All right, thank you.
The, you said we were 4% over budget on the bus routes, can you quantify that in dollars?
Sent home the spreadsheet, but until all of the routes are inputted, I didn't do a complete analysis, because we're still waiting on some special ed routes, and then I will be able to give you a total package as to where we are, that we're combining all the routes and putting them into the budget system, and that's how we're analyzing at that point in time. When I look at that, because I'll be looking, funny, strong utilities, and that's another area, and obviously, fuel consumption, which is a major concern for the upcoming year.
I'd motion open to public, the university public, I could not speak anywhere, basically becoming for work. Miss Anderson, I do have to.
Wow, I guess I haven't been here in a while, I forget. I just wanna say like 20 things, in no particular order. First of all, I wanna say that in 1998, Mr. Arnold Laszlo was the principal, my son also participated in the AP class and stayed an extra period with Mrs. Lefkis' daughter. It was able to be done because there was enough interest. Going on to the second thing about AP Physics, my son Russell, who graduated in 2007, wanted to take AP Physics, and he was one of three to want to take the class. And that's why they couldn't have the class, because there were only three who had already taken physics, who wanted to take physics, he took it because it was not required to take physics. And he took it, and there was one of only three to take it, and that's why they couldn't have the class. About the correct direction of the schools, I have to say that I think this school district is going in exactly the correct direction and good direction. Thank you, Dr. Alphano, thank you, Ms. Glassman, and thank you to all the administrators, the Board of Education. I have two very successful children who came out of this school district, doing well, one doing well in college, one doing well out after college. It's definitely due to the schools. About the foreign languages, many school districts, for languages like Chinese and Russian and some other languages, Middle Eastern languages, do distance learning. I know Henry Hudson High School, which is in Atlantic Islands, which is a very, very small school, they have a 7 to 12 school, they have implemented it in many languages that are very successful. I'm sure that they can give you a lot of guidelines, because they've gone through a lot of Doug providers before they found really good providers, and they do provide that. And that would eliminate the problem of two, three students interested in taking a visit. Henry Hudson Regional School District. Actually, Dr. Zakowski, who's now the president, the superintendent at Ross Brem, was the superintendent when this was implemented, so he might be a good one to talk to, as well as Mrs. Pudina, who's the current superintendent. And there are some nice comments. Also, about the ASCE and the HESPIS test, congratulations. How wonderful that the scores are so high. That's what everyone always talks about, are the scores high enough, are the scores high enough? Well, obviously, they are. Of course, there's always room for improvement, but bravo. And about integrating technology and not having someone to facilitate it, it's foolish. Let's just bring computers in and have nobody do anything with them. They're nice dust collectors, but unless someone's facilitating their use and their proper and important and advanced use, we don't have anything here. Thank you very much.
Anyone else in the public that can speak? Mrs. Bloom, a veteran member.
Good evening, Music Bloom, I see a president. I just wanted to hope, maybe I could shed a little light on the Bon Jovi thing. I know we had discussed this several years ago, we all spoke about it, to send him a letter and see if he would help us with our saving finances. So my question is, is he gonna help us with our saving finances, or are we just gonna give him a win? Has anybody contacted him?
No, we were trying to do that tonight in some fashion, but not there yet.
Okay, and the other thing to address Mr. Bogory's question, I recall when I was working here in the early years, I don't remember how old he was, but Debbie Cooper was still in the front office. And the Bon Jovi family did give a scholarship, they gave a music scholarship every year. And I was in the office the day that she called, and they said they were not gonna give it. And the reason was that they couldn't afford it. But the rumor was, and I know this makes no sense, that he had asked to do a free concert in town, and Dr. Parnell refused him. Now, that makes no sense, because it wouldn't be her call, it would be the borough's call. So that's the story, I don't know what's true and what's not, but that's where it came from. Maybe we can get some money from him.
Anyone else? Nobody else? Oh, silly me. Mr. Bogory, sir.
Joe Bogory, 1210 Horford Drive. Great job on NJAS, and almost great job on HESPIS, he didn't quite pitch that data exactly the same way, with percentage of efficiency in advance, but I think it's up. My only hope for the district, as it's been from day one four years ago, right, is that it continues all the way through to the last measurement, the only measurement of the private sector about kids, right? The state measures lots of times, the private world measures once, SAT, ACT. So let's hope it continues, go there, and you take all the people like me and Ira Babi out of business doing SAT prep, right? Now, we can do other things. Strategy for losing good people, I know who you're talking about, I've worked with him personally, right, at the middle school math, he advanced kids. I think as a strategy, and I guess this goes to Dr. Frank, right, I think we're, from other AP science teachers that I spoke to that we've lost in the last couple of years, I think we're losing good people by what we're doing when they first come in the door. So I encourage you to be as aggressive as dulls allow you to be, right, which is a big disclaimer. If you think that someone's good on the other side of the table, show him step four, because then he's at step seven in seven years, and it's a lot harder for this guy to go across the river when he's only done from a couple steps. So it's all about early stages. I'll talk quick, a minute, he'll keep me on the clock, right? Uh, okay, sorry about that. Wait a second. Yeah, no, 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 I'll do that, right? There's nine opinions up there, and we don't always hear nine people speak at every meeting. So if any individual happens to be more comfortable speaking when Tommy, Billy, or whoever that guy is, that calls from the newspaper once a quarter, once in a while, let him talk, right? So he didn't talk to you first behind a closed door, you get blindsided, it's not the end of the world, it's just communication, right? Address it some other time down the road. On the, I think the words were, not proactive, standing still, and we're on autopilot, right? I believe I quoted correctly, the article, right? You know, autopilot is in there, right? I'm not close enough for the situation to judge these three or four people you guys are, right? But I'm just gonna remind of a couple situations that have happened. Technology, okay? Kevin, you kinda put the blame on me for not reading what you said at last meetings on the website. I went to the website last night after being out of town, watched all the meetings I'd missed, but they stopped at med. It is now July, and I couldn't watch anything that happened after that, right? So if we spoke about high school construction, or salary negotiations, or whatever took place last month, I didn't have the pleasure of looking at that, so I'm sorry, I'm not educated in front of you, then you can take care of it in the park a lot on the way out, get me up to speed, right? The other additions of standing still a little bit, Mike, you said it yourself, how long have you been discussing improving SAT standardized scores? Since you've been sitting in that seat three and a half years ago, I got the emails, phone back when three of us spoke, right? Kevin, you just said here tonight that for six months, nothing's happened on Bon Jovi. I call that standing still, right? Kevin and Curtis, in Slovo on a Saturday last year discussing early stage budget, great discussion on AP Physics was going on, right? All involved, maybe a little different board, not sure who was on it or not. And either Kevin or Curtis said it, and the other said, he's right, that that's the most curriculum we've ever discussed at a Board of Education meeting in my entire tenure. Both shaking your head. That's a little bit of standing still. Now, I'll be the last ones to defend Tom and Phyllis, because we've had more difficulties than other people on the board, they share an opinion, but you kinda put them on the hot seat, there's a little bit of standing still, right? You know, those are four examples, if you give me some time in the park, come on. And I'm not saying it's judgmental, it's just a fact, right? There's a little bit of standing still. Going back to page 12, item H, I didn't hear it close enough when Frank skimmed through it, but when I hear two members of the board disagree with both, and some dialogue, I'll share my opinion. And Kevin, I am all pro-technology, as I spoke to Mr. Agulhas back there, I want to pass the people to the technology straight. In the spring, when you first elected this to the board, somewhere around March, a meeting In the spring, when you first related this to the board, somewhere around March, a meeting I made, right, you know, I stood at this microphone and asked you one thing, sounds good, great, right? How are we gonna quantify the goals, measure the performance of this new approach for the goal, right? And you assured me that there was gonna be standards for goal and measurement of those standards. But you get a big presentation, I didn't see any goals or measurements of how we're gonna determine if this was a success rate. Maybe that's next meeting. Something feel with that, right? Best way to get the high school construction update in parking lot, instead of taking any more time here, agree?
I might be, sure.
I might be, right? And I'm a dummy, and I'm out of town a lot. What's the next meeting, is it August 19th?
Yes, August 19th.